Your Excellencies, representatives of Guatemala, Holy See, Indonesia, Uruguay, you're particularly welcome, visitors, members of the SOAS community, and the speakers from our partner organisations, which include the International Peace Bureau, United Nations Association, UK, Youth for the Treaty on Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, Oxfam, the Gandhi Research Foundation, the United Nations Office for Disarmament Affairs, the Pugwash Conferences on International Affairs, Women Volunteers for Peace, the Manipur Gun Survivors Network, the Indigenous Peoples' Network for Peace, and the Bulletin of Atomic Scientists. I'd say for the point of view of us as organisers, a surprisingly impressive coalition that we brought together at this time and a reflection of the urgency and growing fear in populations and organisations and governments internationally. I particularly want to thank our colleagues from the Interparliamentary Union, who are our main partners for the event and are providing a translation and will be speaking to us later today. My name is Dan Plesch and I am a professor here at SOAS and lead the project on a strategic concept for the removal of arms and proliferation. A couple of housekeeping and administrative matters. This is a realised over pizza with friends last night. A colleague's... This is a conference in five dimensions. There are some of us here in person, no holograms quite yet. Some of our eminent speakers have sent video messages. Some have spent... sent speeches that will be read out by our students and some will join by Zoom. And as I said, the entire proceedings are being recorded and translated simultaneously into French, our five dimensions. And if you want to see the full programme, that's available online. But we didn't finalise our last speakers, as is often the case, until yesterday evening. And we also thought it was a good idea just not to waste paper. We will be filming and taking photographs, so I'm required to say that if you don't want your image to appear outside of these halls, let our team know and we'll arrange appropriate seating. I'm sure with these five dimensions, you will be tolerant of any glitches that occur technically as we go through the day. As I say, I'm responsible for our project on the strategic concept for the removal of arms and proliferation. This concept has been developed over some years now and its ambition seems more important as war burns apace around the world. In a moment, our first panel will introduce this concept in some detail. Now though, it's my great honour to introduce our first video-recorded message from Her Excellency Izumi Nakamoto, who is the United Nations High Representative for Disarmament Affairs and who sent us this message a couple of days ago.
Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to deliver this message to the SOAS School of Oriental and African Studies, University of London Scrap Weapons Conference. At the outset, I wish to applaud Dr Dan Plesch for his efforts to train the next generation of disarmament thinkers and to highlight the important role women have and do play in multilateralism. It has been almost 35 years since the General Assembly last convened a special session devoted to disarmament. The international security landscape has seen fundamental changes over the past decades. We are observing a decade-long trend of increased polarisation amongst great powers and a renewed arms competition among a larger and more complex set of global and regional actors, combined with a decline of trust within and amongst nations. Russia's invasion of Ukraine exacerbated this negative trajectory and created a three-dimensional food, energy and finance crisis, which highlighted the risks of social and political instability. These unfortunate trends have been placing extreme stress on our multilateral peace and security architecture. The world is a less peaceful place today, even compared to a decade ago. A qualitative and quantitative development of nuclear weapons is increasing strategic risks. Advances in conventional weapon technologies are threatening to drive armed conflict into new domains. The use of heavy explosive weapons in populated areas are devastating cities and civilian populations. Global military expenditures continue to increase and have now surpassed US $2 trillion for the first time in history in 2021. In tandem with the challenges of recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic and emerging threats such as climate change, these developments mean that our rules-based international order is facing an inflection point. Trust and cooperation are eroding and the sustainable development goals are slipping out of reach. As a result, we find ourselves at a crossroads for international peace and security and for disarmament. In his report, Our Common Agenda, the UN Secretary General said, and I quote, "The risks we face are no longer managed effectively through the systems that we have." End of quote. To address these trends, he has called for a new agenda for peace to be able to better articulate and seek solutions to these challenges. A central part of this agenda will be the articulation of a new vision for disarmament adapted to address the risks and challenges of the 21st century and reinvigorate the role of disarmament in conflict prevention and sustainable development. It should also ensure our institutional machinery is fit to provide our common security. This new vision can be accomplished through various pathways. It may entail some combination of elaborating new norms, rules and principles to address strategic risks through sustained political dialogue, enhancing partnership with other peace and security and development actors, and finding ways to strengthen our existing institutions. Member states may decide that the only proper form to do this through a fourth special session of General Assembly devoted to disarmament. Ultimately, it will require thought leadership at all levels and the active engagement and support of stakeholders from civil society, academic and the private sector. I am therefore pleased to see your agenda for this conference engaged with these key issues. I hope your discussions are fruitful and I look forward to continuing our engagement with this initiative in the months and years ahead. I thank you very much for your attention.
Well, that was a great opener. It's now my pleasure to hand over to Reece Bowden, who will be chairing our first session.
Well, thanks very much, Dan. It's great to be here and to see all of you here today. So, welcome to our first panel session of the day, presenting SCRAP's Treaty on General and Complete Disarmament, the Global Weapons Tracking Portal and Feminist Approaches to Disarmament. I'm Reece, a SCRAP project assistant, and I'm delighted to be joined by Professor Dan Plesch, SCRAP's director, Henrietta Wilson, SCRAP's Lead Researcher in Global Weapons Tracking, and Nancy Ehrenberg-Peters, a SCRAP assistant working on the feminist disarmament project. At the end of the presentations, there will be time for Q&amp;A and we'll be taking questions from here in the room and also online. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce Professor Dan Plesch. He is Professor of Diplomacy and Strategy at SOAS University of London, where he leads the Strategic Concept for the Removal of Arms and Proliferation and is a door tenant at the Legal Chambers of 9 Bedford Row in London. His research expertise spans disarmament and human rights. His books include Women and the UN: A New History of Women's International Human Rights, Human Rights After Hitler, and America, Hitler and the UN: How the Allies Won World War II. So, over to you, Dan.
Thank you. Hello, me again. I go to be popping up as a participant and as master ceremonies during the day. One of our jobs in bringing this coalition together is to help to turn general disarmament from an ultimate goal, or as somebody said, an item on the list of hypocrisy issued by governments, into a concrete reality. And amongst the, what we like to call the precision tools that we've developed, are a draft treaty framework text, which you find on our website and which you've already had some constructive comments on from Guatemala and other states about how we can improve it. And I bring this forward partly from experience of having been in a room with a smaller group, a far smaller group than this, when the origins of the Arms Trade Treaty were being discussed and when one of my board members said it was an impossible dream when he had been at CIPRI, which is to do anything at all about small arms. Now, of course, and I remember when I was running an office in Washington, one of our interns then wrote what was, I think, the first ever study on ammunition and ammunition control. Now, small arms, the Arms Trade Treaty, they have grown apace from these small beginnings. I wouldn't say they are a tree, they are each of them minor forests, small forests in the international scene now. And it's with that experience that a number of us bringing this project forward are confident that with people in this room and your colleagues and networks outside of it, we can reinvigorate and make real a new special session on disarmament at the UN. And one thing we learnt, I think two things I would learn as an NGO and as an academic, one is never to think that you're a state. That some of my colleagues will think, oh, well, you know, we can do what states aren't doing. Well, states are states and we are not. But on the other hand, we perhaps have some expertise to be able to offer, should not just suggestions, but some draft text for people to work on. And that is what we've done with the SCRAP Treaty. And what we have done in a colloquial way is to look at all the effective paragraphs of historic disarmament agreements. Some still in operation, for example, the START Treaty, just still remaining, the INF Treaty, which few people would note has removed thousands of missiles that President Putin could be firing into Western Ukraine at the present time, that these were removed completely and even after violations and the ending of the treaty, there hasn't been a large-scale replacement of these weapons. So, the operative paragraphs of these agreements of the... on small arms of the ICAWAS West African provisions on small arms of initiatives in Latin America, these all lend themselves to global application. And I think working with colleagues in Oxfam who are expert in these areas, we can look at some of these conditionalities and perhaps also consider that the presumption of legal and illicit is one that we perhaps need to revisit, that we need unequivocal universal controls, not simply a division of who is right and who is wrong in the world. And I think that perhaps the romantic period of humanitarian intervention, there are not so many states around who can claim simply to be the good guys. So, bringing together these existing provisions from START, from INF, from the now-decayed provisions of the European Security Architecture, which provided for the control over 20, 30 years of all armed forces in the wider Europe. And we argued, and at the time we didn't get an audience, but I think we should now, we know how to do this. We have the practice. You may, states and the international tensions may have decided that a number of these agreements should be discarded. But today, with the declining security environment, we do not have to start from scratch. When we talk to governments, to parliamentarians, in our contacts with the Interparliamentary Union and simply members of the public and the media, we can say in large part, we know how to do this. The agreements that you decided you no longer needed actually provide you with a large amount of the detail for the control and regulation of armaments. But to be clear, what we do and are not doing in our proposal, what it proposes is the elimination of weapons of mass destruction. Now, chemical weapons are pretty much covered and played an important part in making the Syrian conflict not even worse than it was, the role of the Chemical Weapons Convention, the Biological Weapons Convention, whose stronger provisions are waiting in the wings to be implemented. And then, of course, the issue of nuclear armaments, where there is a considerable degree of energy and we know this has not yet come to fruition. But if you look at the provisions, for example, we would recommend the International Inspection Regime on Iraq imposed after 1990 was highly effective. The silver lining, if you like, of the disastrous and illegal Iraq invasion was that there were no WMD and that the inspectors of the UN had done their job. Well, those provisions, which are extremely intrusive, if applied to the weapon states, would by and large solve the problem of verification of nuclear disarmament. Plus, the expert work that has gone on in a number of initiatives, not least the UK Norwegian one. Now, the fourth category of WMD, as defined with respect to the Iraq conflict and others, is missiles. And I would want to put on the table, I wrote recently and a colleague reminded me that the then head of the Council on Foreign Relations, Alton Fry, in the 1980s suggested a zero-missiles policy. Now, if we're to take up the ambition that helped drive public opinion in the 1980s and helped end the Cold War, which was zero missiles in Europe, longer-range missiles in Europe, and look at global application, that is the fourth category of WMD that we would suggest being eliminated down to really quite short ranges. We then leave the category of small arms and major conventional weapons. In the area of major conventional weapons, we in this draft text do not suggest elimination of every tank, warship and artillery piece on the planet. You think, oh, well, here's some realism then, even a little bit. But what we do suggest is the application of what we might say is OSCE+ and a number of the Organisation for Security and Cooperation in Europe. These provisions, which work effectively in the continent and save taxpayers a huge amount of money in defence expenditure after the end of the Cold War, these provisions govern all necessary provisions for armies and air forces and are, from a simply technical and drafting perspective, not complicated to apply to navies. Now, I say that cautiously because there are plenty of navies, not least the United States Navy, which wouldn't be too keen on being regulated. We know that. But if we're looking at it from what is practical if you want to do it, these provisions, I think, are valid and that we offer to you for discussion. And somebody was saying, we badly need an equivalent of the UN Process on Climate Change, on climate chaos, which is not adequate, we know. But at least there is an active global continuing process endeavouring to reverse the effects of CO2 emissions and an objective of going carbon-free, of zero by 2050. Well, what we're suggesting is a practical agenda for weapons control on a similar sort of model. And we think that perhaps can be appealing to publics and politicians. And when it comes to, of course, weapons which are killing people day to day in large quantities, often it is the category of small arms. And I remember some 30 years ago, when we started work on these issues and when our colleagues at CIPRI said it was just too hard. Well, we have come some way, not adequately. But I think if we look at the best practice and the suggestions for small arms control, then these can provide us with good measures in this regard as well. So, I perhaps have abused my position as chair, as a leader and taken too much time. But that is what we are offering in the draft treaty and we hope that that will help concentrate minds when we ask member states and NGOs to support a decision at the General Assembly to activate the fourth special session on disarmament, which has been on the books of the UN, ready to go for, as Izumi Nakamoto said, for several decades now. Thank you very much, Reece.
Thanks, Dan. I'd now like to introduce our second speaker, who's Henrietta Wilson, who's going to be speaking about the Weapons Tracking Portal. Henrietta is a freelance researcher and educator. She researches military technologies and global arms regulations and teaches politics and international relations at UK universities. Originally trained as a physicist, her career spans three decades of collaboration with major NGOs and universities in the UK and Germany. She is currently working with the SCRAP Weapons Project, researching the possibilities of global weapons tracking through open source research and is a visiting research fellow at King's College, London.
Thank you very much, Reece. Can you hear me, everybody? Can I have brilliant? Thank you very much. Yeah, my name's Henrietta Wilson. I'm absolutely delighted to be here and I'm extremely grateful to all of you for coming, for Dan's interesting comments and for all the organisers. So, as Dan mentioned, Dan mapped out a possible way forward for thinking about general and complete disarmament from almost a political point of view. I'm going to be backing this up with a look at disarmament technologies and whether and how these can be harnessed within wider disarmament processes and some words about what the SCRAP team is doing in this sort of area. So, as has been mentioned a couple of times now, the last special session on disarmament was all the way back in 1988. Since then, we know there's been a huge transformation in digital technologies. Even for those of us who weren't there at the time, I'm sure we know that before the internet, things were very different. We found information in very, very different ways. And so, the transformation of digital technologies has really fuelled a new generation of open source research. By that, I mean research that uses publicly available tools and information. And as I hinted, before the internet, people were doing this. People were scanning newspapers, they were tracking down reports from parliaments and think tanks and putting it all together and even having global networks through the post and the telephone. Now, thanks to the internet, this space has completely changed. The internet makes getting information from traditional media much easier. We now can get global news very, very easily. Sometimes you have to pay for it, but it is there, publicly available. The internet also gives access to brand-new data points like information from satellite imagery or from social media posts. And it also gives us tools to manage large quantities of data and process it. Things like, I'm thinking about spreadsheets that help collect and collate different data and communications technologies that enable collaborations between huge numbers of people across huge distances, as well as visualisations. There's a lot of different ways to collect and analyse information now. So what? So, I'm now going to outline three different ways as I think this is making a difference to the sort of area that we're interested in today. First of all, this new open source research gives us a whole new set of monitoring capabilities. It used to be the case that a few well-resourced states could see things in a significantly different way to other groups. So, only governments had access to satellite lights not too long ago. Now, this new digital open source research means that non-governmental groups and individuals and under-resourced states could have capabilities that were previously undreamt of. So, I'm going to give you a couple of examples. Bellingcat, a non-governmental organisation, were the group that broke news on the chemical weapons uses in the UK, in Syria and against the Russian opposition politician Navalny. Another non-governmental group, Federation of American Scientists, were among the groups that broke the news about new Chinese nuclear weapons. And AKLED, another non-governmental group, has been exposing political violence that links weapons uses in Yemen to the arms trade, the global arms trade. So, the main message from this first kind of so what point I'm making is that there are now more people that can see more events globally. So, the second way that I want to highlight that this new resource makes a difference is it gives enhanced transparency. And transparency in the past has been very important to achieving disarmament goals. It's linked to improved prosecutions and accountability when people violate agreements. It's linked to reductions in corruption. It's also during the Cold War, simple transparency exchanges were linked to reduced tensions between the US and the USSR. And it's also been linked to really robust irreversible disarmament. So, the idea is if antagonists know more about what they're doing, what each other's doing, it builds confidence, it builds trust, it facilitates the environment that you need for disarmament and it facilitates the environment you need to stay disarmed. So, transparency can help and open source research can help achieve transparency. The third factor that I want to indicate of where it makes a difference is an idea that maybe open source research could help verification, could help treaty verification. So, verification is formally defined as the systems by which states parties to treaties build confidence in each other's compliance. And at times, verification also means systems which can identify non-compliance of treaties. That's not always the case, but in some cases it is. And through the history of achieving robust arms control, non-proliferation and disarmament, there's been collective agreements that the desirability, the achievability of different measures is often linked to perceptions of how verifiable they are. So, if people don't want treaties to happen, they often say, oh, but they're not verifiable. So, the phenomena of open source research really raises questions about could open source research be a way of filling this desire for verification? Could it fulfil the verification gap? And I think that's a space we at SCRAP are exploring very carefully. I should mention in our research, there are some provisos, there are some limits to what we can expect from open source research. The first is to say that not all transparency is good transparency. There is, there's research that shows that sometimes people can achieve better political outcomes by keeping secrets, keeping a level of ambiguity. And too much transparency can actually close down policy options at times. There's also a number of ethical dilemmas embedded in open source research. For example, who gets to decide what's being looked at? Who gets to decide what will be published when? How can you protect witnesses or protect proliferation-sensitive material? There are some sensitivities there. The other proviso that I'd say is that open source research is not identical to verification and we shouldn't accidentally slip into this idea that open source research can do all of verification. Verification needs to be agreed by states and as Dan said, we are not states. The states have to work out their own systems for themselves. And more than that, open source research does something a little bit different. Lots of the non-governmental work in this area is decentralised and Lots of the non-governmental work in this area is decentralized and benefits from that. There's redundancies, there's creativity in the system. So there are some limitations, but I would point out that the scale of current open source research is such that it suggests it's going to be unignorable, that all sorts of groups are finding out all sorts of information. And the international community, the thought leaders that Nakamoto referred to would be advised to really think about how it can be harnessed so that it can be maximized and any dangers can be minimized. So very quickly, I'm going to say some very quick words about the scraps work that's been going on in this area. Well, first of all, we've been researching the significance of these developments in the sort of way that I've been kind of cherry picking just now. We've got a number of publications and we've got a book that's going to be coming out sometime soon. We've also been really pleased to have a chance to work with students from Worcester Polytechnic Institute in Massachusetts, who've built us a prototype global weapons tracking portal, which you can see on our website, which really acts as a directory into groups that are tracking weapons and weapons uses globally. And we've also tried to support the development of the global epistemic community that's interested in weapons tracking. We ran some webinars, again, you can get that through our website and interactive cafes to try and help practitioners build links with each other and share best practice. So that's all from me now. Thank you very much for listening. I think I gave you a really big whistle stop tour, so I'm very much looking forward to any questions and discussions either in this panel or in the breaks. Thank you very much, Reese.
Thanks very much indeed, Henrietta. And so lastly, I'd like to introduce Nancy Ehrenberg-Peters, who's going to be talking about the Feminist Disarmament Project. Nancy is a project assistant at Scrap. She co-leads the research and coordination of Scrap's Feminist Disarmament Project and previously co-led Scrap's Strategic Stability Project. Together with two colleagues at Scrap, she is also guest editing a special issue of ZFCO, the German Journal on Peace and Conflict, which examines global disarmament, peace and conflict, and integrates the role of gender perspectives and in particular, those of women from the global south. Nancy is currently completing an MSC in Violence, Conflict and Development here at SOAS, specializing in conflict, post-conflict reconstruction and peace in the Middle East. So over to you then, please.
Thank you, Reese, and thank you Henrietta and Dan for opening there. Can everyone hear me as well? So my name is Nancy and I'm a project assistant at Scrap and I co-lead the Feminist Disarmament Project. And it's really great to be here with you all today and I look forward to hearing from other amazing speakers later on. So Dan and Henrietta spoke about Scrap's work developing a framework for a treaty and possible verification tools. Now, today I'm going to speak about the practical implementation of disarmament on the ground in communities which are wrecked by violence because of the proliferation of weapons and armed conflict and to really justify the urgency behind holding a UN special session on disarmament. So a little bit of background first. In two thousand and nineteen, I co-founded the Feminist Disarmament Project at Scrap. And throughout the two years, we've had the privilege of collaborating with thirty-four experts, the majority of whom are women from the global south. And we started the project by launching a seven-part webinar series and each webinar kind of focused on a different area, such as the practical and financial obstacles facing women and entering the field and contributing to its deliberations. Also, women's contributions in negotiating and implementing the TPNW, et cetera. And I'll speak a bit more about those in a second. And the webinar series was very well and widely received. For the first two webinars alone, over people from over forty-eight different countries tuned in to watch the live recordings, which amounted to over three hundred attendees, which doesn't include the hundreds more views we received via YouTube for the recordings there, which is still available also on our website if anyone here is interested. And throughout the project, we have worked very hard, my Scrap colleagues and myself, to try and ensure that underrepresented voices, especially of women from the global south, are heard. And I believe that our webinar series was unique for this reason because many of the speakers, not all of them, but many of the speakers we heard from did not have a global platform, even though they should. But it was really important to us to ensure that they were heard. So just to give you a little bit of a flavor of the women, the amazing women and organizations we've had the privilege to collaborate with and learn from, I'm just going to mention a couple of them here. So we've had the privilege of working with a non-violent activist who led global women peacemakers across the demilitarized zone from North Korea to South Korea, campaigning for a formal end to the Korean War. We've also worked with UN representatives from Trinidad and Tobago and Costa Rica, who were at the forefront of facilitating and negotiating Resolution sixty-five slash sixty-nine in the TPNW. We've worked closely also with women from Cameroon, Sudan and Nicaragua, who explained how the conflicts in their local communities are fueled by the illicit proliferation of small arms and light weapons. And they spoke about how their work included ensuring that women and feminist perspectives are embodied in the disarmament work in their local communities, such as by building capacity of communities through training, raising awareness and education initiatives and creating a culture of peace and conflict resolution through different creative strategies, including singing in their local communities about peace and disarmament and also advocating for the end of the use of child soldiers. We have also worked with a civil society practitioner from Lebanon, who has been a key figure advancing global agendas such as women, peace and security into a more localized discourse and who is also a member of the Arms Control Coalition in the Middle East and North Africa region. We have also learned so much from an educationist and founding director of the Indian-based organization Women in Security, Conflict Management and Peace, which promotes the leadership of South Asian women in disarmament. And finally, we ran a webinar which we collaborated with UN Lyric on the role of women from Latin America and the Caribbean in implementing disarmament through multilateral treaties, diplomatic efforts and advocacy at the civil society level, with a particular focus on the disarmament of conventional weapons. I will just move on to the second part of my presentation by talking about how the webinar series I just overviewed really inspired us to take this project much, take it forward and what else can we do with it? So myself and Henrietta and our Scrap colleague Yanis are co-editing a special issue for ZFCO, the German Journal on Peace and Conflict Studies, and it's due to be published at some point next year. The title of the special issue is Gender and Disarmament: Feminist Approaches to Arms, Arms Control, Disarmament and Their Role in Peace and Conflict. And perhaps self-explanatory from the title, but this special issue adopts a gender approach to disarmament policy and practice and violence. And we aim to showcase the nuanced perspectives and diverse perspectives of the misuse and proliferation of violence and disarmament efforts aiming to mitigate these pernicious outcomes. And just a couple, I'll just run over quickly a couple of the key findings or themes that have come to light both through the webinar series and also our special issue. As I have already touched on, the first key theme really underpinning our research here is that global efforts to promote disarmament are heterogeneous. We must avoid a one-dimensional lens at, you know, applied to understanding gender and disarmament, for example, in this case. And I know Dan also talked about also avoiding a one-dimensional lens for, you know, considering illicit and licit dichotomies. So yes, there's not just one way to be a feminist and there's not just one perspective from the global south. We have to break down these artificial and socially constructed boundaries that we attribute to our understanding of gender and disarmament. And secondly, another key theme that's been, that's underpinned and has come to light in a lot of the papers in the special issue is how many policies which aim to achieve greater diversity, such as by increasing the number of women involved in certain activities, can in fact reinforce the status quo, rather than actually achieve disarmament and therefore can ultimately serve to ensure violence and destruction. So just to round up now, thank you very much for listening to me today. I guess just a takeaway from my presentation is that people living in violent communities across the world want general and complete disarmament. For them, it's a realistic and achievable proposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. That was, that was great. And thank you to all our panelists for their very informative and important presentations. So we have about ten minutes now for questions. If you'd like to ask a question online, please type a question in the Q and A text box there. But perhaps first of all, we could take a question from in the room. Does anyone have a question? A gentleman here, please. Oh, there's a mic just coming now.
The open source methods for more challenging, I guess, investigations. When we're looking at, for instance, China and Taiwan and how a better understanding of the capabilities of both sides might help prevent further escalations, deterioration, collisions. Is there anything that actually research in that area?
Thank you for the question. So the question I think was, are people watching China and Taiwan? Is that right? I don't have any concrete examples to share with you just now, but I'd be amazed if people weren't watching. And I think your question raises really interesting follow-on points about how visible different things are to different sorts of monitoring technologies and how those monitoring technologies can be evaded. So a big, big theme of our work is that technologies often help. They won't do everything. They won't solve a political problem or a kind of entrenched antagonism between, between communities. So for example, overhead satellite technologies, I can see have such a lot. And in, in, in some cases, in, for example, nuclear weapons, there are absolute signatures that differentiate between a weapons program and peaceful uses. I'm not saying it's easy, but it's technically plausible. But in other, in other weapon systems, it's much less easy to distinguish between those things. And even in the nuclear side of things, there are limits to what the technologies can do because a cloudy day will obscure imagery. Syria with its nuclear weapons program put it in a big building. So what open source does for us is it also gives us a kind of way around these to an extent in that it's often not really aiming to get single categorical unambiguous evidence of one thing. It's very multi-dimensional. So people are coordinating and comparing and cross-referencing lots of different data points to build up a picture of a likely scenario. So, so I think, I think it does give visibility to things that otherwise would be pretty opaque. Does that answer your question? Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, do you want to follow up?
I think though that there are political and sometimes semi-conscious decisions by governments and particularly by the news media about what one allows into the picture. And I think Taiwan is, and China is a tremendous example. The D-Day landings were carried out by allied United Nations forces who had complete air superiority, complete naval supremacy over, had to sail across some thirty miles. And then they came quite close to failing against the German forces. And many of the beaches were open, sandy, Normandy beaches. The situation of Taiwan, there's a distance of over a hundred kilometers. No one in any of the scenarios sees that the Chinese would have anything like air or sea superiority. And then Taiwan is a largely urbanized island. So assuming the Chinese get to, do get ashore, then they find themselves immediately engaged in urban warfare. Now, that calculation is extremely simple to work out. Similarly, that the West and China's adversaries outspend China by something like eight to one. All the scenarios assume somehow that the Americans have their hands tied behind their back and Japan is not involved, let alone South Korea. Which isn't to say that I have anything to say for the government in Beijing, but all the data in the world isn't useful if analysts choose to exclude it. So who writes in the Western media that NATO outspends Russia by at least ten to one? All we hear about is we must increase by another two percent or three percent. So analysis is critical and I think to some extent it is sorely lacking. And the Taiwan Straits issue is a case in point. So forgive me for perhaps putting the downer on the data side of it. The data is only valid if we choose to use it. And I think there is a tragic failure in analysis with respect particularly to that issue.
Thanks very much, Dan. We have a question from Michael Goodman online, which is, to what extent is Israel's nuclear program being monitored through the open source method?
Thank you for the question. I mean, I think, like I said for the previous question, I'm not going to go into details of who's watching what. There are groups doing that. I would point you to our Global Weapons Tracking Portal for an example, well, for lots of examples of people who are watching different parts of the world. And one of the interesting things about open source research practitioners that I've come across is that they don't always restrict themselves to particular examples in that sort of way, to particular geographical areas or issue areas. A lot of the communities is essentially collaborative. They pivot very quickly. And so when there are developments in Israel, the news that we consume will have come from these open source researchers and they'll have come from a bank of people that you will be familiar with. Bellingcat, the New York Times investigative unit. There's a group called Forensic Architecture based in London University. Our Global Weapons Tracking Portal will give you links to a lot of these groups and they will be pivoting to look at these questions when they get signals, when they get red flags from maybe social media. Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah.
Lob in. The portal which we developed for our questionnaire, in a sense, is a do-it-yourself kit. Not quite IKEA, but your local hardware store equivalent of tools. If you want to look at Israel or Pakistan or whatever, or Britain, then there are tools there to enable you to do that and to look at current studies by NGOs and match them against what you find out yourself in looking at satellite imagery, at tracking aircraft and naval movements and so forth. So what we're doing is to try to develop a public access store for people wishing to carry out this work and demonstrate also the viability of something like this on the global scale for governments.
Thanks, Dan. Do we have any other questions in the room or online? This gentleman here, if you could bring the microphone down, please.
Good morning. I'm the second secretary of Russian Embassy in London and you know, this uh, you know, the speaker says about the importance of verification. Uh, and as we know, there is a biological weapons convention. It bans the type of uh weapons of mass destruction. Uh, but there is no verification uh under the convention, and it is a problem. Uh, in November, uh, in Geneva, it will be organized review conference of the BWC. And maybe it uh can be adopted a legally binding protocol uh to the convention with effective mechanism of verification. This initiative is on the table, as I know. Uh, what do you think about it? Thank you.
Who would like to answer this?
Sorry, could you repeat the question about the specific, the review conference? Um, I didn't get the specifics of that.
Yeah, sure. Uh, in November, in Geneva, it will be organized, the review conference. And uh, some group of states propose uh to adopt a legally binding protocol with effective mechanism of verification under the convention. Uh, what do you think about it?
Um, well, as Dan said, uh, that's sort of up to the state's party to the biological weapons convention, isn't it? And we we know there's a, you know, it's notoriously uh a tricky, a thorny issue, thinking about verification in in that context. Um, because the dual use overlap with between biological weapons and legitimate uses is huge and extremely diffuse. And biological weapons programs could in theory be very small and very easy to hide. Um, I would expect the review conference to mention the Article Five process that's currently underway. Um, where where I understand Russia has has launched a formal mechanism um about its allegations uh into bio weapons activities in Ukraine. Um, I know that there's lots of research being done on that, uh, about the disinformation around uh around claims. So I think that's probably maybe what what's 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 going to shape the debate around that. I don't know. You you may have more insights than I do. Um, I'd be interested to talk to you about that.
Thanks very much. Um, I think there was one more question from a gentleman at the back. Is that right? Um, uh, the gentle, in the middle, sorry, sorry, sir. Did you have a question?
Thank you very much to all the panelists. Um, it's been very interesting so far. I have a quick question for Dan on um uh the the possible regulation on um on armament. How could you elaborate this a bit further and maybe tell us who would have to be on the boat? What kind of institutions had to be involved for this to uh to be able to come into effect? Thank you.
A great question from a, an expert of uh from Switzerland. Um, uh, the cop out would be to say that in our draft text, we probably would have some bracket would say subject to negotiation. Um, I think if one looks at um, one of the defects of an proliferation treaty is it doesn't have an operational secretariat, for example. Uh, on the other hand, if you look at the European security architecture, um, there are some quite well developed um secretariat functions, implementation functions. I think the relatively, the starting point, I would say, for experts in states would be to look at what are the most effective mechanisms for implementation. And I think the OSCE is a starting point. There are other other mechanisms which one might take as as models. Uh, I think that there is a provision that one of the uh, uh, our board members who backstopped and edited uh a treaty text for the State Department for most of his professional life, Pierce Corden, and colleagues mentioned to me that we also might think about a provision for uh unilateral or small group of states uh entry into force provision that we think, we we agree with our colleagues that this will enter force as a means of uh building uh momentum. Uh, but clearly, I don't think one can look at these mechanisms and these provisions without looking at a combination of of secretariat and inspection functions. And we would think that possibly uh the creation of a uh of a global weapons tracking portal service. And in his conversations we have with Hans Blix um a few years ago, uh, about lessons from Iraq. Um, and he, he introduced the idea of to us of saying what one should create is not an inspection enforcement mechanism, which is fine if you can get it, but um an inspection and verification service, rather different conception. Because unless you have a situation like Iraq where it's imposed by the will of the Security Council, you are looking at forms of consent. And I think what we are trying to do in this project is to say, people approach this issue by saying it is theoretically impossible. And what we want to say, it is theoretically highly practical if you want to do it. And that then changes the nature of the debate about how you think you can move forward. Um, but we're not in any sense present pretending that we have all of the answers. But if you, you know, push me against a wall with a microphone, as perhaps you're doing, I would say, um, the OSCE provisions extended to conventional forces provides a pretty powerful place to start when you're looking at major conventional weapon systems. And right now, of course, we have this huge uh gap with the, as I say, the WMD crowd over here and the humanitarian small weapons over here and nothing at all to deal with the major armaments of the general purpose forces of the world states. And that, I think, is something which is not acknowledged at all. And that this project, this project is nothing else. It highlights that issue. And I'm sorry if I've given you rather a lengthy answer. I'll happily discuss it in more detail uh informally. And we'd like to sit down and, you know, sit in the room with a few colleagues and work on on text. That's what we are here for. But it is a great question. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Um, well, unfortunately, we are out of time. Um, but thank you for all your questions. And thanks again to our panel for their groundbreaking presentations. I would like to take this opportunity to encourage you all to sign scraps call for a special session on disarmament at the UN, which you can do online by using the QR codes which are displayed um on the doors um and around the room um in the Brunai Gallery. So um, thanks very much.
Welcome to the second panel of Scrap Weapons Conference on activating a UN special session on disarmament. Uh, it's a huge honor to have you all with us this morning. Um, just a reminder to our online audience that a French translation is available on Zoom. Just click on the interpretation function at the bottom of the screen. So we're very, very grateful to the distinguished guests here uh for representing their governments and institutions from Uruguay, Guatemala, Indonesia, and the Holy See, Dicasterie, for promoting integral human development. Um, we hope that many more governments will join our growing global constituency constituency to advance the agenda for general and complete disarmament. Their participation is of crucial importance. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our speakers. First, His Excellency Alvaro Merzinger, Ambassador of Uruguay to the United Nations in Geneva. Let's hear his statement now.
A good day. My name is Alvaro Merzinger. I am the ambassador of Uruguay in Geneva. We're very proud to be invited to, to share some thought with you in this important panel and important topic. So we congratulate for the idea to celebrate that kind of meetings regarding uh arms control. So now we have the Brunai speech. We thank the Scrap Weapons Project for the invitation to Uruguay to join this conference. My country is the first supporter of general and complete disarmament as the way to achieve long lasting peace and development. Almost forty-five years after the first sessions on disarmament took place, many of the conclusions reached in this report still hold true today. The imperative to disarm continues to be valid and as urgent as it was back in nineteen seventy-eight. By now, it is proven that the accumulation of weapons, in particular nuclear weapons, does not lead to a peaceful war, but rather constitute more of threat to our collective security. The more nations arm themselves, the more tension grow around the world, a fact that leads to lack of confidence and instability. As a member of the treaties for the provision of nuclear weapons in Latin America and the Caribbean, better known as the Treaty of Tlalco, and therefore a country of peace in the region of peace, we see your initiative as a catalyzer for a session long overdue for the international community and more timely than ever in the current state of affairs. A quick glance of a map of the world where nuclear weapons free zones and nuclear weapons states are despite to reveal, reveals that those who are armed, the most are the ones who are still more bound to engage in conflicts that may affect the rest of humankind. Nuclear states have a bigger responsibility in this regard. We are also at a point in time when technology developers are being weaponized. On the wrong premise that technology advances weapons have benefits over other type of weapons derived from the ability to more precise with respect for the target, which is in fact a fallacy. No weapons are good and using them as a means of defense is a lesser evil that states are entitled to, but which nevertheless a terrible risk both for domestic and for international security. Also, many disarmament agreements have been negotiated so far. It seems that there is not conviction in the international community that is necessary to disarm. Any effort to promote a collective awareness of the advantages of greater international cooperation in general and of disarmament in particular is welcome. And the Scrap Weapons Initiative goes in that direction, for which it has our full support. In two thousand and nine, Oscar Arias, then his second term as president of Costa Rica, introduced the Armed Trade Treaty to the United Nations with this world and a quote, "I will turn today to see that everything has changed except this. Peace continues to be a step further away. Nuclear unconventional weapons still exist despite the promises. It is up to us to ensure that in twenty years we do not awaken to the same terrorists we suffer today. I am not ignorant of the fact that the biggest arms dealers in the world are represented here. But today, I do not speak to the arms manufacturers, but rather to the leaders of humanity who have the responsibility to put principles before profits and enable the promises of a future in which finally we can sleep peacefully." End quote. Ten years have worn by since President Arias's speech, yet he wore a solid practice, a practice in two thousand and twenty-two. Let us hope that his appeal is heard. And then ten years ahead of us deliver on a world that put peace before war and development before weapons. Thank you very much for your attention. I wish you a successful meeting. Have a good day.
Thank you very, very much, Ambassador Merzinger, for giving us such a strong message, stressing the urgency for a UN session on disarmament. Next, it's my honor to give the floor to His Excellency Jose Alberto Briz Gutierrez. He's ambassador of Guatemala to the United Kingdom. Ambassador Briz Gutierrez, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Considering the protocol observed, I would like to first thank the organizers of this event as well as so as University of London for hosting us here today. As representative of Guatemala, it is an honor to participate in this conference, part of a larger effort of the strategic concept for removal of arms and proliferation initiative. In the past few months, we have witnessed events that remind us about the importance of the disarmament agenda and of the core objectives of the United Nations as established in its charter. In this regard, I wish to express our solidarity with Ukraine. Guatemala has condemned in multiple international fora the illegal, unjustified and unprovoked invasion to the sovereign territory of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. We stand in solidarity with the Ukrainian people as they deal with the devastating consequences of such heinous acts. It is therefore highly appropriate to recall that the only guarantee to safeguarding humanity is the prohibition and elimination of weapons of mass destruction, as well as the correct regulation of trade and use of conventional weapons. Only general and complete disarmament can achieve stability in favor of international peace and security and prevent the violation of international humanitarian law and humanitarian disasters caused by armed conflict. However, current challenges facing disarmament and nonproliferation makes this particularly difficult. The complexity of the current international scenario and international security environment, the emerging threats to international security, including the rapid advancement of science and weapons related technology, the lack of awareness by governments and societies in general regarding the importance of disarmament, and the lack of results within the United Nations system to create new disarmament related international instruments or strengthening existing ones are only but a few examples of obstacles to overcome in order to reach our common goal of a world in peace. Multilateralism and cooperation have proven their worth, especially after the lessons learned as a result of the pandemic, and the importance of tackling international problems in a united front. These elements added to a strengthened political will in the disarmament and international security efforts should guide us. And nothing better to prove it than the convening of a fourth special session of the United Nations devoted to disarmament. It is important to note that the special sessions of the United Nations are dedicated to a very specific topic because of the relevance of the issue. The convening of S S O D four would give this matter the attention it deserves and would be an opportunity to discuss general and complete disarmament. Without doubt, there might be discouragement from a group of UN member states if the focus of the special session is as extreme as to promote such an ambition objective of a complete and general disarmament. However, it is equally important to emphasize that the other side of the coin is extreme. As well as an old out war with nuclear weapons would wipe out human life from the face of the earth, not to mention that the use of other weapons of mass destruction and certain conventional weapons cost the life of thousands of people every year. One, however, might ask, what about the Conference on Disarmament, then? The Conference on Disarmament was recognized as a single multilateral disarmament negotiating forum of the international community. But it hasn't approved a program of work for more than twenty years. A special session on disarmament could revive the discussions on multilateral instruments, a discussion that now more than ever is needed to preserve peace and international security through the means of dialogue and negotiation. It goes without saying the relevance that the General Assembly has had on disarmament, especially with examples such as the Comprehensive Test Ban Treaty, the Armed Trade Treaty, and the Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. In this regard, it is important to highlight the leading role taken by civil society in promoting and achieving the adoption of the latest international instruments on disarmament. For Guatemala, as a country with a peaceful vocation and a firm and longstanding position in favor of general complete verifiable and irreversible disarmament, with in clearly established deadlines, this is an important issue. Guatemala is a proud founding member of the Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons in Latin America and the Caribbean Treaty of Tlalco, the first nuclear weapons free zone agreement, positioning the region as pioneers in rejecting the existence of atomic bombs through international law and consequently an important ally on disarmament issues. This year, we celebrate This year, we celebrated the fifty-fifth anniversary of the Treaty of Tlalteolco, and Guatemala will hold a course on disarmament and nonproliferation from the Agency for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons in Latin America and the Caribbean, Opanal. Guatemala is also party to most of the international treaties on disarmament, and last June, the Minister of Foreign Affairs, Mario Adolfo Bucaro Flores, by instructions of the President of the Republic, Dr. Alejandro Yamatei Falla, deposited the instrument of ratification to the Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. We affirm in our commitment with nuclear disarmament and nonproliferation. At the same time, it is important to mention Guatemala’s support toward the relevant matters such as conventional weapons through the United Nations Program of Action, the Arms Trade Treaty, and the SIFTA Convention. Pope Francis recently expressed that, and I quote, “The use of nuclear weapons, as well as their mere possession, is immoral. Trying to defend and ensure stability and peace through a false sense of security and a balance of terror ends up poisoning relationships between people and obstructs real dialogue.” Guatemala shares this feeling. The world needs a boost in the disarmament architecture, as you may know. Despite month of August, after four weeks of negotiations in New York and after two years of delays due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the tenth review conference of the Nonproliferation Treaty didn’t achieve consensus in its final document. As the cornerstone of nuclear disarmament and nonproliferation, we perceive this as a very bad signal to the follow-up of the previous commitments of the review conferences and evidence of the slow or little progress in the political will of states on the aspiration of the global objective of a world free of nuclear weapons. Now an objective more necessary than ever. To conclude, Guatemala have used the disarmament machinery as a vehicle to bring the international community to a destination, that is, international peace and security. And complete and general disarmament is one of its components. We applaud and support today’s efforts in bringing together different stakeholders from all over the world, civil society, think tanks, academia, governments, among others, to promote dialogue and put words into action in favor of a fourth SSOD. Since 1995, the General Assembly has been requesting the celebration of a fourth special session, and Guatemala supports and shares the urgency to convene it, in which the agenda assures the balance between both nuclear disarmament and conventional weapons. It is urgent to reactivate the disarmament agenda and prevent disasters across the globe. The life of our future generations depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you Ambassador Briz Gutierrez on that message for the need for disarmament to achieve peace in our society. And now over to you, Councillor Riando Sembering. Councillor Sembering is Coordinator for Political Affairs at the Embassy of Indonesia to the United Kingdom. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Good morning, Excellencies, dear friends. I would like to thank Professor Dan Plush of SCAP Weapons and SOAS University for inviting the Indonesian Embassy to this important and very relevant discussion. It is a pleasure to be here. We welcome the nature of this event where economists and civil society take the lead in the conversation in pushing the disarmament agenda. We also take note of the draft treaty introduced by the previous speakers. It is a comprehensive draft, and I suppose many countries would want to study it before making comments. The support for and broad participation of the civil society at this event, I think speaks to the urgency for progress in disarmament. It is this sense, it is this sense of urgency that we need to echo in the multilateral community, especially in facing the fundamental changes of today’s security landscape. And the comprehensive approach of general and complete disarmament has the potential to manage these challenges that our current regime has not been able to fully address. Open source research contributes in knowing more about the realms of today’s security threats, including by increasing transparency in armaments. In today’s situation, especially with the crisis in Ukraine, Indonesia cannot be more convinced in the urgency of nuclear disarmament, which presents the most pressing challenge in advancing the disarmament agenda. It is also timely in the wake of the failure of the recent Nonproliferation Treaty Review Conference to adopt an outcome that speaks to this urgency. Indonesia has always been a strong supporter of nuclear disarmament. However, I believe I’m not a pessimist if I say that recent developments have been disheartening. We are witnessing the reemergence of nuclear arms race and rhetoric of nuclear weapons use in conflicts and a severe weakening of the global disarmament architecture, as I said, demonstrated by another failure of the Review Conference to come up with an agreement. And also, we see a widening trust deficit between the possessor and the non-possessor states, as well as a growing ignorance on the humanitarian and indiscriminate impacts of nuclear weapons explosion. Under these circumstances, nuclear disarmament is most needed, and the global nuclear disarmament architecture must be reinforced. The idea of convening the fourth special session of the General Assembly on disarmament, or SSOD IV, is not something new, and Indonesia is certainly not adverse to the idea. We believe that we must also examine the intended purpose of such a meeting. Does it intend to push for progress? Positions, as we know, positions of many key countries are quite entrenched, and a change of venue unfortunately may not translate to a change of stance. And now the question is that, does it come out of frustration with the Conference on Disarmament? Despite its current gridlock, while the CD has had its success in the past, and it is a proof what can be achieved when the international communities have both their urgency and the machinery to work together. Just to name a few, I think the Conference on Disarmament and its predecessor has been instrumental in the creation of an important mechanism of disarming weapons of mass destruction, including the NPT, the Biological Weapons Convention, the Chemical Weapons Convention, and the CTBT, the Comprehensive Nuclear Task Ban Treaty. Coming back to the SSOD, the first SSOD was in 1978, was considered a success in progressing multilateral nuclear disarmament diplomacy. It provided for the establishment of the Conference on Disarmament. But more often than not, efforts, multilateral efforts to curb the use of nuclear weapons still end with a deadlock. And I would like to put the emphasis here on the sentence “curb the use” and the approach of building blocks in nuclear disarmament discourse. My view is that the building block approach was not created with progress in mind. It was created to block it, literally, building blocks are more often than not built to block. We cannot secure progress if we can only commit to negotiate a building block without concrete commitments to the end goal, that is, elimination of nuclear weapons. This is apparent in the Conference on Disarmament’s deadlock as it tries to find progress in nuclear task ban and negative security assurances. The same is true with the recent focus on the NPT RafCON, on the proposal of Nuclear Risk Reduction, or NRR, which was put by the nuclear weapons states and its allies during the negotiation. It was intended to become another building block or step which wants to be seen by its advocate as portrayed as a progress without having to touch upon actionable commitments, timelines or benchmarks to disarming nuclear weapons. And before the draft outcome document was blocked, some language about the NRR could be agreed between the negotiating parties. It was to link, and more importantly, to base risk reduction upon considerations over the catastrophic humanitarian consequences of any nuclear weapons detonation. And this is where the humanitarian rationale comes in by creating a strong narrative that are first sensible in terms of cost and benefit analysis, even in a realist perspective, and also a narrative that is human-centered in its view of security. And based on this humanitarian rationale, in Indonesia, we see the adoption of the TPNW as an important progress in disarmament diplomacy, due to its role in devaluing nuclear weapons and evolving how states view security. As I have mentioned, Indonesia is open to initiatives in progressing nuclear disarmance through the SSOD IV. We are going to listen to today’s discussion with interest and would like to offer several points for discussion. Among others, first, would reactivating the SSOD be any more sensible than vitalizing the Conference on Disarmament? Second is that would SSOD IV have a different mandate than that of the CD? The third, how would the draft treaty on the general and complete disarmament complement the existing ones, including the NPT and the TPNW? I think it is important that we do not reinvent the wheel and strengthen the mechanism that has been agreed. And the last points for discussion is that with with the draft treaty, would it still be necessary to negotiate a comprehensive convention on nuclear weapons? So these are some of the thoughts that we offered for the discussion today. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Councillor Riando Sembering, for your message on why a treaty on disarmament is so urgent in today’s current landscape. Our next speaker is Dr. Gabriela Vega, who’s reached us from the Vatican and is bringing us a message from the Holy See Dicasterie for promoting integral human development, where he works in disarmament affairs. Dr. Vega, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Sanita. Thank you for inviting me. It’s a pleasure and an honour to be here with you today. Excellencies, dear friends, I am pleased to be here on behalf of the Dicasterie for promoting integral human development. Allow me to begin by thanking Professor Dan Plush and the SCAP team of SOAS University for their work on what is perhaps the most sensitive issue of our time, promoting global disarmament for long-lasting and just peace. I wish specifically to convey the most heartfelt greetings of Cardinal Michael Cherny, prefect of our Dicasterie. The Dicasterie is proud to remain actively engaged with the SCAP Initiative, following last year’s event, Advancing Integral Disarmament in Time of Pandemic. A jointly organized webinar that saw the participation of the Secretary of State, prefects of other Dicasteries, and Pontifical Council of Holy See, among others. Such high-level participation was not by chance, but rather a sign of the genuine esteem that we have for this initiative. Today, it is clear that the issue of disarmament is more urgent than ever before. Yet, the concept of disarmament, or heaving arms control, is often dismissed from the international debate, considered to be unrealistic and naive, and suppressed by political interests. This was seen in the recent failure to agree on a final document during the review of the Nonproliferation Treaty. We came together again to advance this crucial cause, which as recently stated by Pope Francis, may seem paradoxical to many. He recalls, and I quote, “We need to remain aware of the dangers of short-sighted approaches to national and international security, and the risk of proliferation,” end quote. To avoid this short-termism, we need to reopen spaces for dialogue and rethink our understanding of security. As Cardinal Parolin explained during last year’s webinar, and has the Holy See as repeatedly emphasized since, a correct concept of security calls into question elements not only of a political, military nature, but also of an ethical, moral, judicial, and socio-economic nature. This is what we can rightly describe as integral security. However, we cannot have security without reciprocal trust, and we will not have trust without real dialogue. As Pope Francis explains in his encyclical letter Fratellituti, and I quote, “This trust can be built only through dialogue that is truly directed to the common good and not to the protection of veiled or particular interests,” end quote. The world needs all kinds of dialogue, inter-religious, political, cultural. We especially need to engage those who think differently from us if we want to achieve lasting peace. Unfortunately, even international organizations, the quintessential place for dialogue, are stuck and blocked by the unwillingness of some to engage in understanding and addressing the root causes of our common problems. Things bring me to the core of this conference, the call for a special session on disarmament at the UN General Assembly. The Dicasterie fully shares the spirit of this proposal. Global problems need global approaches, and as we are observing today, states by themselves cannot fully guarantee their own security. Proposals that look for a shared and concrete solution to such a fundamental issue must be encouraged and praised. To conclude, to build peace, we need dialogue and trust. Weapons erode trust and build fear. The SCAP Initiative, aiming at a general and complete disarmament process, represents an interesting and commendable proposal in the right direction, and the Dicasterie look with favor at its developments. Thank you again for invitation and for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriela Vega, on stressing why governments should support disarmament and the need for dialogue. We’d also like to convey our greetings to Bishop Nicholas Hudson, who’s here representing the Bishops Conference of England and Wales. Thank you to all our distinguished speakers for the strong messages of support you’ve given us here today and for just being here, for your participation. And remember, anyone listening online can support us to join SCAP or send a message to your government stressing the importance of a US special session on disarmament. Now, I’d like to open the floor to questions. If anybody’s got a question, we’d love to hear from you.
Yeah, my question is to, I think, quite all the representatives here and after these impressive speeches. What do you think, which role can the Non-Aligned Movement play in the preparation of such a fourth UN session?
Is there anyone who’d like to answer that question?
Can we take it in turn?
Yes. Sembering?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the questions, and I have to admit, I was not expecting to have a question on the Non-Aligned Movement, and I think my colleague from Indonesia might have a more wider knowledge of the impact that the NAM movement can play. But what I would like to say, having worked within the NAM in some previous postings, I think it’s a movement that, within its principles, it contains and it strives for complete disarmament and nonproliferation. And I think that it is important that the countries, the members, we, the members of the Non-Aligned Movement, work together to try to come up with a strong position to move ahead, not only on the multilateral treaty. ahead, not only on the multilateral treaties that we participate as a grouping, but also in promoting a fourth special session on disarmament. I think that the movement has a key role to play in all these efforts. Thank you.
I think there's another question somewhere, yes, over there.
Thank you for the most stimulating and impressive presentations. My question would take us from the global to the global environmental, global poverty aspect of what we're about this morning. There seems to be an obvious link to be made between the vast amount of money spent on weapons across the world, the harm war does to the environment, and the world food crisis. The cost of living crisis which is now upon us will simply make the world food crisis worse. So it raises me two questions really, which I'd like to put to any members of the panel who would care to respond. Should groups like the ones we represent do more to encourage global environment forums to make the impact of weapons and of war part of their discussion? And how should we make the cost of weapons part of the cost of living discussion also? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I'll just hand over to perhaps Counselor Riendo Semmering. Perhaps you'd like to answer that question?
Thank you for the questions. Very briefly, if I may refer back to the previous question about what the NAM could play, I think, yeah, Indonesia is uniquely positioned because we have been holding the position of coordinator for the NAM Working Group on Disarmament in New York for, well, the last couple of decades. And I think speaking from the conversations that I had with colleagues in New York, NAM is such a large grouping, so it can play, definitely it can play a very important role in advocating any initiative. At the same time, the size also presents a challenge, and there needs to be a coordination at the working level, and everything must be agreed at the Coordinating Bureau in New York. And anything that NAM proposed has to be agreed by consensus. And you would appreciate that for such a large grouping, this is one of the biggest challenges. But definitely, NAM could play a role in advocating any initiative, including the one we're discussing today. And just to touch briefly on the second question, I think, indeed, for example, at the TPNW, I think there has been a link established between disarmament to environmental concerns, that is, environmental remediation. And I think everybody can at least see the group argument in the link between disarmament and sustainable development. You cannot have the latter without the former. So it is a strong case to push for disarmament. And as I also mentioned in my remarks, the humanitarian rationale, it is a strong argument, which is quite broad in appeal and universal. It's a bit difficult to argue against humanitarian appeal. And I think the TPNW has shown that it can be a very persuasive rationale in pushing for the disarmament agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on the floor? No. In the meantime, I would just like, yes, I was just going to say, yes, we'll hand over to Dr. Gabriela Vega.
Thank you. If I may, on the second part of your question, I had the opportunity to speak with Professor Dan Plesch, and he rightly understood that at the end, nuclear disarmament is to avoid a faster way to destroy the environment. So there is a clear link between environmental policies and the interest for the environment and climate change and the interest for disarmament. They are strictly linked, not only from an economical point of view, but also because when we are not able to build trust on a certain issue, it becomes more difficult to build trust on others. We don't live in echo chambers. Governments speak with each other on many different issues. So if we want to achieve a global solution on climate change and food security, we need to find a solution to disarmament, nuclear and conventional disarmament. So the first, we can contribute to this firstly, recognizing this link. This is the first thing that we have to do, because in the global debate, this is not something that is clearly recognized by everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Question here from an online listener to the debate, and he's Michael S. Goodman, who says, "A concern which I have is that various of the governments represented here, that's Uruguay, Guatemala, and Indonesia, indeed possess no nuclear weapons. But the fact is that that hasn't prevented serious legacies of internal violence and human rights violations in the respective 20th century history of those various republics." And I'll hand you that question, Ambassador Bries Gutierrez, first.
Yes, thank you very much. I think that the question refers to the recent past in Guatemala, and we signed a peace agreement. It was an internal conflict. I think many countries in the region in Latin America had internal conflicts, but we haven't had in the region a war between countries as devastating as other regions have had. And we are committed as a region and as countries to complete disarmament and nonproliferation. And we're making our efforts to build our societies within the framework, in the case of Guatemala, within the framework of our peace agreements. It is not easy when resources are limited and resources are sometimes deviated to other priorities in the global north. But we do, are committed to fulfill the peace agreements of Guatemala and create a more equal society. It is generally should have changes, you cannot change from one generation to the other, and a lot of awareness raising, a lot of education needs to take place, and we are committed to that. Thank you.
Dr. Gabriel Vega, would you like to add something to that?
Thank you for the question, such an interesting question. They say that diplomacy begins at home. At the same time, I think what is happening in one's domestic constitution should not stop the foreign policy apparatus of that country to be active in the international forum. And Indonesia, like many other countries, certainly, we have a challenge, internal challenge, in terms of managing some, you know, security challenges inside Indonesia. And I think it is the commitment of the government, including at the highest level, to tackle that challenge with the greatest respect to human rights. And that should not stop Indonesia to be active at the international forum, especially at urgent and most pressing issues such as our common endeavor for disarmament. That's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Berry. I just would like to ask if anybody else got a question to ask?
You raised some very interesting questions, which perhaps we can't just deal with informally right now, but we can more substantively outside of the hall. The CD, you know, has its agenda in theory and not in practice. And that agenda in theory is, I think, restricted in terms of what the opportunities may be that present themselves today. Clearly, the international situation requires new or new old initiatives again. And the fourth special session is there, on the books, ready to go. So, no, we don't know exactly how it would turn out. It may be a disaster, there's plenty to say it would be. But then, you know, when we protested and said, "No missiles in Europe," in the 1980s, everybody laughed in government when we said, "Well, let's talk to this obscure poet in Czechoslovakia, Václav Havel." The British Foreign Ministry said, "Don't be silly, what a waste of time, it'll just annoy the government." When my colleagues reached out to dissidents and trade unionists in Poland, Lekvolecza, similarly, our Western government said, "Don't waste your time, you annoy Warsaw." Well, we did that, and dramatic change came, and we had an INF treaty and zero missiles. So, speaking as an activist, I would say, this is not a spectator sport. You can't just take the agenda as given, you have to move things. More concretely, we all know, we characterize it, that there is a diplomatic trench warfare in the NPT and elsewhere around Article Six, in which the weapon states say rhetorically, perhaps, "We can't do anything on nuclear because also we have to do something on general." And there was a comma in Article Six, which, in terms of the First World War, one might characterize as the no man's land. There's one constituency putting for nuclear, another constituency who doesn't want nuclear using perhaps the excuse of general to hide behind. I think moving the general debate forward can have that diplomatic advantage of outflanking that decades old trench warfare at the diplomatic level. But more concretely, a number, and while I'm a strong supporter of the TPNW and of nuclear disarmament all my life, there is a reality that states with nuclear weapons have concerns about conventional forces, non-nuclear forces, which to some extent the nuclear disarmament movement doesn't give a sufficient attention to. So, in the interest of common ground, as well as political or diplomatic rhetoric, there is a great deal to move forward in that conventional realm and on control of missiles in particular, which is a sort of bridging technology, to meet the concerns of weapon states and their allies in a comprehensive way. And that we have track record of success in this area, if only we remember it. So I'm very happy to have this in more detail. But you put out some questions, and I think it behoved me to give some response on the floor before we close. Thank you very much.
Professor Dan Plesch, thank you very much. In the meantime, we've had loads of questions online, and there's a question from Senator Mary Lou McFeadron. She's from Canada, and she's saying, "Are there specific tasks that parliamentarians could undertake to move forward on the fourth special session at the United Nations?" And I'll begin with perhaps Dr. Professor, sorry, Gabriel Vega, yes. Apologies for that.
Thank you. It's a tough question, difficult to answer. Maybe I would really like to hear from Professor Dan Plesch his opinion, because...
In fact, Henrietta on the backboard did just urge your government, your Canadian government, to support the fourth special session at the UN. That is a direct call, I think, from this meeting.
Yes, it is. I'd like to, obviously, Henrietta, if you'd like to carry that, yes, that would be great.
Okay, so I'm just going to repeat what Dan said, but on a microphone, so that the virtual participants can hear. Scrap has developed a call for action, which anybody, parliamentarians, anybody can sign, advocating for the fourth special session on disarmament. Would also encourage you to take it to your parliaments, if there's space and appropriate fora for that, to get conversations going and just try to get momentum going. We recognize there are structural obstacles and barriers in terms of attention. There's a limit in time and attention that people have got for policy issues. And as the panel has outlined, this is a very complicated political time. But yes, parliamentarians can support the vision, build momentum towards it through their own parliaments and through our call for action. Have I missed anything, Scrap colleagues? Okay, thank you.
We've got another question here, actually, from Ayun Michael Johnson, who says, "I'm Michael Ayun, Chairperson for the Defence Committee in the South Sudanese Parliament." And he says, "We all agree that possession of both nuclear and conventional weapons is a threat to mankind. Weapons have been acquired on assumptions to protect nations or individuals from external threats and are used by manufacturers as a source of wealth. What message do you have to the beneficiaries and to the end users?" And I'd like to start off with Ambassador Alberto Bries Gutierrez to answer that question.
That's a tough one. I don't know, I think that I would say to everybody that they have to think of the impact those weapons in society have, how they deter or deviate resources from other priorities, more pressing priorities within those societies. I think that will be the message, is think about the impact of the trade or what you're doing has in your own family circle, even in your own society. No one is free from their destruction. Thank you.
Yes, we all have a part to play in this, don't we? And I'd like to give that same question to Dr. Gabriel Vega.
So I agree with the ambassador. We cannot think that we are untouchable by this risk of destruction. So we have to recognize that this kind of issue, global issues, have only a global solution, and we are part of the world, we are part of the human family. So we cannot imagine ourselves as independent. No one can save, no one is saved by himself. So we need to cooperate and also to understand if we are part of the solution or part of the problem. This is something that is difficult to admit, more than to understand many times.
And that's very true, isn't it, that each one of us can play a part, and each one of us can play a part by joining Scrap or just writing to your government and saying, "We want a UN Special Session on Disarmament." That would really greatly help. Counselor Riendo Semmering, would you like to add something?
Thank you. I don't have fancy closing remarks. However, I think what, one of the things that we could do to push disarmament agenda is to bring it to the personal level. More often than not, talking about nuclear weapons is seen as something strategic in the purview of states, big actors. It is important that we bring it to the personal level. First of all, like I said, on the humanitarian imperative, to remind people that it concerns everyone, it affects everyone, it is indiscriminate. And also, I think, as we move further and further from the World War II, where nuclear weapons were actually used in combat, there is a growing naivety about the impacts of those explosions. And the younger generation, where ignorance is a bliss, of course, but there is a need to keep reminding people of the, you know, the devastating impacts of these weapons, weapons of mass destruction, as the name implies and suggests. So, thank you.
There's a question there, right? Thank you.
Sobering thought is that today, we elect, is the wrong word, today we have imposed on us a new prime minister who adores nuclear weapons. The question is, can one, when we await the names in her cabinet, it is just the kind of tiny percent chance that there might be one individual, for example, X or Y, or Tugendhat, to give him his name, one of them might just be amenable on the margins to precision targeting, if I may use a metaphor. Can, is there any way, this is possibly aimed at Dan Plesch, really, who mentioned something like this last night. like this last night. It's good and important. I should certainly write to my Member of Parliament, who is going to, who is not my favorite person, Theresa Villiers, but I won't name her. And should we be thinking about precision targeting of the occasional grown-up who might be found in those government circles?
Thank you very much for that. I thank you very much for that. We'll just have another question there.
Yeah, thank you very much. My name is Ben, I work for the United Nations Association here in the UK. We're a UK charity committed to disarmament. And just following on from that last question, actually, just my personal hope is that Theresa May gets, our esteemed incoming Prime Minister gets in touch with some of her roots, her CND roots, and actually gets back in touch with some of her, her own sort of previous positions on nuclear disarmament. My question's actually to the panel specifically about the special session. As a UN organization, where, you know, I've got a soft spot for UN processes and this is an interesting UN proposal that could really make some progress, but I'm wondering why it hasn't happened for so long. We talked about the third special session happening decades ago. There's any number of great reasons and causes that have put disarmament on the agenda and the concerning rise in global military spending especially. So, my question is, you know, why has it taken so long? What is that block or that building block, as someone described earlier, that stopped it happening over the past sort of 25, 30 years? And is this a live issue that groups of states are calling for and that's actually sort of on the agenda with, you know, plans and proposals for how it could be framed and sort of make a positive contribution to all the sort of plethora of existing sort of processes and disarmament sort of machinery? Thank you very much.
Perhaps Professor Dan Plesch would like to answer. We'll start over.
Maybe you could respond to Tony's comments and then all the panelists could give their final responses to everything, yeah.
One of my favorite books, The Conservative, Well One Can. Sometimes I think in SOAS, people would rather talk to Taliban than to Tories. So, I think we need to get over that, get over ourselves that. The expert diplomats will know better than I why it hasn't happened. But I think broadly, for much of the last 20, 30 years, people saw progress in disarmament. Though we had the end of the Cold War agreements, Gorbachev, et cetera, European agreements, we had the Arms Trade Treaty, we had the landmines, there was succession and hope. And now, much of this has been put into the shredder. And yet, and now we face fear. People say, well, we have to wait for the right climate for disarmament. Well, to my mind, the most brings the climate against disarmament is fear and people are frightened again. I'm sorry, I'm taking too much of this room.
Thank you very much, Professor Plesch. Perhaps I'd like to let Ambassador Gutierrez answer that question as well.
Well, thank you very much. I think the path is set. There has been agreements to convene this session. There has been work done on the open and the working group. It is very difficult when countries get distracted by other global, probably more pressing issues. And I think that one of the tasks that we have to continue doing, and I think I mentioned about that in my remarks and in the previous panel, they were explaining about the work they are doing at the grassroots levels to raise the awareness on the importance of, on this issue. It was also mentioned about how the global attention has gone to the climate change agenda and how we are all, we all know nowadays, we open the newspaper and it's always there. There are always news about how that is impacting our, our world and our lives. And I think that we have to reach a level similar to that, raising more awareness within our societies about the importance of this issue, to be able to help the governments that sit in those negotiating rooms to feel the pressure to come to agreements and continue moving forward. It is a very complicated agenda because of the conflicting interests between the member states, the money that those interests move also, and the fears in some countries about what we've been talking about, the threats that they perceive threats that they have from neighbors or from other powers or influences in the region. So, I think that we have to continue raising the awareness within our societies. I commend the efforts that are being done by the Scrap Initiative and SOAS and as governments don't capitulate, continue pressing within the UN system. Multilateralism is a very slow work, as you know, but we cannot stop doing it because we don't see the progress that we want to see at the pace that we might want to see. So, I think that if we all continue working together and we pull civil society, academia, the think tanks and we, the governments that are in favor, we will eventually get to move ahead in the United Nations system. That's, that's the way multilateralism works. Thank you.
Thank you for that positive message. Dr. Gabriel Vega, would you like to add something?
Just to say that again, I agree with the ambassador. We sometimes we have the idea that the United Nations are detached from our reality, are detached from the ground, from the people. This is not really the case. There is a huge distance, but it's not impossible to communicate. How we can communicate, as the ambassador was suggesting, raising the awareness on the topic, just as we have seen, has happened with the climate change. This is the path, in my opinion. We have to, to help any kind of initiatives that push for the creation of a movement similar to the one on climate change. At least, this is what I believe.
Dr. Gabriel Vega, thank you. And again, a reminder that, you know, you can just join Scrap or send a message to your government or your MP and you can, you can help by doing this. And a final answer from Councillor Rianda Semmering on that question.
Thank you. I think I agree with what Professor Plesch also mentioned. If we look at the previous SSOD sessions, we have had three of them, 1978, 82 and 88. But the first one was the only SSOD seen as relatively successful and second and third was seen as failures. And then he mentioned about the end of Cold War in 1991. I, this is a conjecture, but I'm quite confident that it changed the whole global security landscape and also the dynamics at the negotiating forum at the UN. And then he also mentioned that the CD had some considerable success and I think it also influenced the mood at the negotiating table. We had the, after the end of the Cold War, we still had the Chemical Weapons Convention in 1993 negotiated by the CD, although then we have the CBT in 96 and then we have been having this gridlock for a couple of decades at the CD. But I think all those factors contributed to the questions why it has been taking so long for this fourth session, of the special session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Rianda Semmering. I think we've come to the end of our debate and discussion and it's been an excellent session, I think. We've all learnt something, we can all take something back with us and I hope we get lots and lots of support for Scrap. Thank you, everyone.
One of the people I'd hoped to contribute couldn't be with us today, but it was his idea to invite Dr. Park from Korea, President of the World Methodists Council, an old friend of mine, perhaps better known around the country at least, as an impresario of pop festivals, Michael Evis, who created the Glastonbury Festival some 50 years ago. But what people aren't aware of is that he's been propelled all these years by his methodism, by the message of John Wesley. And although he couldn't be with us, he agreed to have a chat with me, which we'll see as a short video in a minute, about the underlying principles of universal values of peace that propel his work. People who go to the festival or see the stages will see banners across the front. Greenpeace, Oxfam, Martin, my friend from Oxfam, WaterAid. What these banners symbolize are millions of pounds donated to these charities through the festival as well as the message, progressive messages that are projected through the festival. So, I just want to share with you a short conversation that he and I had a couple of days ago about his values, underpinning his work towards good causes and the values of joyfulness and celebration, epitomized by what is now the world's greatest music festival. Not necessarily the way in which fundamental Christian values are often described in the media, but you'll hear from Michael, that's very much how he sees it. And through that, I want to extend a further welcome to Dr. Park.
Many, many years and all that time, your values and your methodism have really informed the way in which you run the festival and contribute to peace. And I wanted you to talk about that as we're having a dialogue at the university with people from all different religions, including the world Methodists. You started with methodism very, very early.
Well, I started when I was three and my father was a preacher and my mother was a teacher and they were very keen Methodists. And so that we all went to the chapel, the Methodist Chapel in Pilton, to Sunday School on Sundays and then... And we were indoctrinated, I would say, by the doctrine of John Wesley, of the link between religion and socialism. So, 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 so there had to be a purpose into our lives that was based really on the social responsibility to humanity. So, I had that from the age of three and so, so, so I was a great believer in the Christian message.
And for you, that Christian message has been very much about peace and when we first knew each other 40 years ago, of course, we were involved in anti-nuclear work and now again, we're having to worry about war.
Yeah, we certainly are. I mean, it's more, it's more threatening now than it has been through all that time, Dan, I reckon, don't you?
I do, yes.
It's more dangerous now than it was 30, 40 years ago even.
I think, I think so and of course...
And the CND movement was so strong in those days, in the 70s, that we were all part of.
Yes.
And that you were the leader of, in fact, weren't you?
Well, one of them, yes, when we first got together. Of course, now, we were trying hard to build energy again. And I wondered if you got a message, you're very keen on the next generation, the TNG, as you call it, whether or not, what you would say to young people today? Because of course, you spent a lot of your life and a lot of the festival supporting peace activities, Greenpeace, CND, Oxfam.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But I just hope that the young people, I think young people have got it on board, don't you? That they are concerned and they are worried about the future of the world through the eyes of Putin and Donald Trump and co, you know what I mean?
It has scared people again.
There's a big, yeah, there's a lot of fear about the future, I think. And it never has been a better reason to campaign for peace than now.
Yes, we're also trying to get a new initiative at the, at the UN to, to move these, these things forward. But as we're talking to different religions, how for you does Wesley's message about peace inform the way in which you go about how you run the festival and your daily life? Because Wesley has a great deal to say about peace, doesn't he?
Yeah, well, it's certainly, I've been stirred by the views of John Wesley through the whole of my life, basically. And we go to chapel on Sundays and we sing the hymns and all that kind of thing. But there is a fundamental truth to the John Wesley message that runs right through the whole of the Christian doctrine. And so, that's why it worked for me and has been effective in all the things that I've done. I've done my social housing, it's been a huge, it's been a huge part of my life, you know, setting that up. And the festival is run hopefully on fundamental Christian principles, but it might not be fundamentally obvious all the time. But that's what's driving me, night and day, the whole of my life is actually driven by those principles I was weaned on by John Wesley. And they're more effective now and I think that they're more meaningful now than they ever were, you know? And I think the world is becoming more and more dangerous now. There were these big players that are playing a more pivotal role and it is decidedly more dangerous than it was in the 70s.
Yes, I, I agree. I mean, as you know, my, my late mother was a Quaker and so, you know, they're quite close to the Methodists and we shared in our background very similar values when you and I first worked together 40 years ago. And it was kind of you to say nice things about how we worked together then.
Yeah, that was great. Well, you're a great help to me then, Dan. And, and I mean, you're doing your job now, campaigning for world peace, which is really, really so important. And so, let's hopefully that you can become successful in that sphere.
Well, we'll, we'll do our best. Talking about saving bacon and as you know, I got my chequebook out once or twice in those days as well. Now, of course, many, there are many more religions active in Britain around the world and I think at the festival, we see people coming in from different faiths and the festival seems to be very, very inclusive in that way.
Yeah, I do hope so, yeah. We're all fundamental believers in the fundamental truths, the views of John Wesley, which are quite, they're universal, basically, aren't they? They really are and the future of life, I mean, as we know it, it depends on those values being upheld. I mean, I'm a firm believer in that.
Yes, and hopefully what we can do together to push forward this new initiative with the UN will, will help, will help do that and hopefully you and I can continue to work on that.
Yeah, fantastic, Dan. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks very much for joining us, Michael. Thanks a lot.
Good afternoon and welcome back to Scrap Weapons Conference on Activating a UN Special Session on Disarmament. My name is Zara Kapasi and I am the Project Manager at Scrap Weapons. So, this is my first time. So this morning, we have heard from governmental institutions and delegations, as well as representatives from the Scrap Weapons team. I would now like to welcome religious representatives from the Gandhi Research Foundation, the World Methodist Council, the Rostrian Trust Fund of Europe, Lebanon's Committee for Christian-Muslim Dialogue, and the Vatican Dicasary for Interreligious Dialogue to discuss the role of interreligious dialogue for peace and development. I'd like to thank our speakers for their time and support. And it is now my pleasure to introduce our first guest. Our first speaker today will be Dr. Gita Dharampal, who is the Dean of Research at the Gandhi Research Foundation, based in Jalgar, India. She is a retired professor and former head of the Department of History at the South Asia Institute in Heidelberg University. Her publications and research focus includes topics ranging from pre-modern trans-cultural interactions between Europe and India, the maritime cultural history of the Indian Ocean region, medical history, religious ritual transformations, the sociocultural and political history of the colonial period in general, with a special emphasis on Mahatma Gandhi's movement of political and cultural resurgence. She has held visiting fellowships and professorships at various international institutions, including, among others, Stanford University in the United States and Indian universities in Delhi, Kolkata and Hyderabad. Thank you, Dr. Gita, and I look forward to your intervention.
Apologies, Doctor.
Yes, yeah, right. Thank you very much indeed for this kind introduction. My warm greetings to the eminent panelists and to all members of the audience, offline and online, and my sincere gratitude to the efficient organizers of this important conference. It's a real honour for me to say a few words today. And my short presentation is entitled, "Today's Alternative: Nonviolence or Nonexistence." And I begin with a quote. I'll be turning off my video because my connection is a little unstable. I'm in a provincial sort of place in India and therefore I'll just save the yeah, so I hope you can hear me. The quote that I'm beginning with is states, "Nonviolence or Ahimsa is the only thing that the atom bomb cannot destroy." I did not move a muscle when I first heard that the atom bomb had wiped out Hiroshima. On the contrary, I said to myself, unless now the world adopts nonviolence, it will spell certain suicide for mankind, end of quote. This iconic statement by Mahatma Gandhi in the aftermath of the cataclysmic bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki in August 1945 rings all too true for us today and more so than ever before. Not only had the atom bomb not exploded his deep-rooted faith, but rather this diabolic weapon had clearly demonstrated for this prophet of nonviolence that Ahimsa and Satya, nonviolence and truth, remained unassailable. Or more powerfully expressed in his own words, that I quote, "The twins of Ahimsa and Satya constitute the mightiest force in the world. Before it, the atom bomb is of no effect." And he elaborated further, "The two opposing forces are wholly different in kind. The one, Ahimsa, moral and spiritual; the other, physical and material. The one is infinitely superior to the other, which by its very nature has an end. The force of the spirit, that is Ahimsa, is very progressive and endless. Its full expression makes it unconquerable in the world," end of quote. In his last years, between December 1945 and the 30th of January 1948, the day of his assassination, categorically condemning nuclear armament, Gandhi reiterated explicitly that the development of the atom bomb represented the most sinful and diabolical use of science. And even more apodictically, that the atom bomb the atom bomb mentality was immoral, unethical, addictive, and not and that only evil would come of it. For according to him, quote, "The atom bomb only aggravates violence and never protects against it and therefore symbolizes the futility of violence," end of quote. So in a nutshell, nonviolence for him was the only antidote against the atom bomb and the only way to canalize hatred and resolve conflicts. Lastly, he exalted that, "It is the duty of large nations and all other nations in the interest of world peace to give up the atom bomb," end of quote. That's what we're doing today. So now faced with the contemporary scenario in which the present nuclear arsenals are equivalent to over a million times that of Hiroshima bomb and can destroy the human civilization many times over, confronted with this extraordinary crisis and yet inspired by Gandhi, we are called upon to make a sincere commitment to rebuild a safer, nuclear weapons-free world. However, this can only succeed if there is solidarity and unity, not only between nation-states, but also between world religions, so that together we can transform our doomsday predicament into a nursery of cooperation and empathy. For as Gandhi emphasized, Ahimsa signifies not just physical nonviolence, but means more extensively avoiding any harm, whether physical, mental or emotional. Ideally, Ahimsa also implies the renunciation of any form of domination over other things or beings. In short, the paramount importance also in all Indic religions given to Ahimsa can greatly contribute towards world peace. As mentioned earlier, Ahimsa for Gandhi is paired with Satya, truth derived from Sat, which signifies an existential and unifying foundation of all that lives. As such, Ahimsa, thus enhanced with Satya, not only represents a force greater than violence, but also connotes that self-sacrifice is preferable to the sacrifice of others. So one is willing to sacrifice oneself for the purpose of Ahimsa. Another dimension stressed by Gandhi is Ahimsa's faithful consort, Karuna, meaning compassion. Karuna is considered an inherent quality in all human beings. Because of the underlying oneness of all beings, Karuna is extended to others, not just out of love, but because it is an entirely logical thing to do. As a direct antidote to cruelty and indeed as a psycho-spiritual balm against the deadening influence of the atom bomb, Karuna can help to eliminate callousness and indifference to the woes of others. To mitigate the imminent danger of nuclear warfare, Gandhi again, most aptly observed, I quote, "Behind the death-dealing bomb, there is the human hand that releases it. And behind that still is the human heart that sets the hand in motion." And he concluded that, "Just as the hardest metal yields to the sufficient heat, even so must the hardest heart melt before the sufficiency of the heat of nonviolence," end of quote. So provided we are sincerely committed to Ahimsa, Satya and Karuna in thought and deed, we would not only retrieve the sacred in modern times, but also reinforced by our unstinting negotiations at all levels, we would contribute to rescuing the world from this threatening apocalyptic disaster. More explicitly, in line with a verse from the Rigveda and in the Gandhian spirit, which exhorts us to, I quote, "Come together, talk together, let our minds be in harmony. Perfect be the union among us," end of quote. Let us in mutuality and fellowship eschew every form of polarization and violence that leaves society in a monologue mode rather than enabling dialogue. Let us appeal to the humanity of all nation-states to tackle our shared moral task so that discord can metamorphose into a transformative and cooperative new paradigm. Our ultimate goal through interreligious dialogue, laying down weapons of the mind and the heart, is to advance integral, universal disarmament to rid the globe of nuclear weapons, not only because they cause catastrophic harm that even affects future generations, but also because they are totally obsolete and are utterly unable to meet today's challenges. Instead, we should create a global fund from the astronomical nuclear expenditure to be used infinitely more viably for health, education and the fight against climate change and thereby ensure human and environmental security and wellbeing globally. Bearing all these considerations in mind, I would like to stress the importance to each and every one of us of calling on the United Nations General Assembly to issue a resolution in support of activating a fourth special session on disarmament. To conclude, Gandhi's inspiration, together with the wisdom derived from all world religions, provides us with a moral compass to help us navigate our way away from the cataclysmic disaster to shape a new paradigm in order to realize a safer, more humane and sustainable future for our planet Earth. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Dr. Dharampal, for your message on Ahimsa and Satya, so nonviolence and truth, and for reiterating the Hindu-Gandhian perspective on disarmament. I would now like to introduce our second speaker, Reverend Dr. Jong-Chun Park, who is the President of the World Methodist Council. So Reverend Park is a Korean Methodist pastor, serving the Methodist Theological University in Seoul for 30 years in the position of professor and president. He graduated from Emory University and received a PhD in systematic theology. He has been the Chair of the Theological Education Committee of the World Methodist Council, as well as the co-chair of the Oxford Institute of Methodist Theological Studies. Reverend Dr. Park is a prominent Christian leader working for the Methodist churches in Asia and ecumenical churches in Korea. Thank you, Dr. Park.
Thank you for inviting me to be here, especially Professor Dan Pleish. Also, I was very moved when I watched the video on the prominent Methodist leader, Michael Eaves. I'm so excited about the possibility of meeting him soon. Thank you for that. And I didn't know that you were an anonymous Methodist. Anyway, I think Methodist people are singing Christians, Charles Wesley's tradition. So probably Michael learned from that tradition. And also Koreans are known as Eastern Irish people in East Asia. So we love singing and that is why K-pop has come from. And I remember, I think Dan and you and me belong to the Peters generation, not BTS, but Lenin's, John Lenin's phrase in Imagine, imagine there's no countries, it isn't hard to do, nothing to kill or die for. I think that is very, still very prophetic. Because we are now struggling in conflict and war. Because of what? In the name of nationalism. I think nationalism is number one heresy, according to my theological judgment. So international effort to activate the special session on disarmament in the coming UN General Assembly is a very, very, I think, important and is our, or I think the humankind's common mission. And I appreciate what the strategic concept for memorable arms and proliferation script that indicates. I really like that phrase, strategic concept. So I think I have been learning and still will learn through this conference a lot of strategic concepts. And because I'm theologian, I'm not really well-buried in this disarmament argument and these courses. So I'm learning, I'm getting a lot from you. As a theologian and a pastor, but I can contribute to not strategic concept, but maybe spiritual intuition. As a manner of concept, concept without intuition is empty. Of course, intuition without concept is very dangerous because it is blind. And also I appreciate the Scrap's effort in incorporating the feminist movement in this disarmament effort. For me, bombs bombs carry these felix symbols which have to be deconstructed by, only by the feminist logic and practice. So I do feel deep solidarity with feminist counterlogos, counter logic and counter practices against nuclear arms and arms race. Let me just, because I come from Korea and representing World Methodist Council, so during my presidential term, I have been focusing on this issue. So let me begin with the Korean issue. According to 2021 World Military Expenditures and Arms Transfers, which is the final edition, the US Department of State published, the North Korea's military expenditure per GDP from 2009 to 2019 has been number one in the world. The military expenditure of North Korea during this period is the average 23.5% of GDP, while only 2.5% of GDP in South Korea. However, the real amount of North Korean military expenditure is quite smaller than that of South Korea. It's in six times, even 10 times sometimes. The bellicose rhetoric of Kim Jong-un, the Supreme Leader of North Korea, in his speech on July 27, 2022, 69th anniversary of Korean War Armistice reflects the desperate military and economic situation of North Korea. The new conservative government of South Korea has provoked North Korea by the statement of preemptive strike. The tension will increase as the South Korea-US joint military drills, which which took place from August 22 to September 1, are going to be conducted, was conducted on a large scale, larger scale in late August till September 1. It is shocking, but no wonder that Kim warned of nuclear war deterrence by saying, quote, "The Yunseok Your government and his army will be annihilated," unquote. As more and more powerful US weapons are expected to be deployed for the joint military drills, even while North Korea is preparing to conduct its seventh nuclear test, the arms race on the Korean Peninsula will intensify in the coming month. In the keynote address of the Beijing Forum 2010, the renowned German theologian Jürgen Moltmann raised an important question, quote, "What happens when a nation possessing nuclear weapons becomes obsessed with this religion of death and turns into a collective suicidal assassin against the rest of the human world? Because it is driven into a corner and gives up all hope," unquote. Because it is driven into a corner and gives up all hope," unquote. Therefore, the first and foremost priority of disarmament and peace at the brink of nuclear war is dialogue and diplomacy on the basis of compassionate listening to the enemy. Sincerely acknowledging the right of the other side to exist, we have to think about and even empathize with what's going on inside North Korea, not just along the demilitarized zone. It was the former US ambassador to South Korea, my mentor, James Delaney, who tried to shift American foreign policy from snubbing the North Koreans to walking to find common ground to be human and humane. Critiquing both neocon imperialism as well as liberal imperialism of the US, imposing its will upon the world, Delaney sees the heritage of American constitutional democracy lies in the mission, quote, "to be a people of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for whom life is larger than the self." The expression of that largeness is a quality of spirit and generosity, collegiship, participation, just sympathy, the ability to think in behalf and for another person. The next step of peace and reconciliation is to organize for peace, not for war. A new format of the Six Party Talk, namely P3 plus three, three nuclear states and UN Security Council members, member states of the US, Russia, and China, plus three UN member states of South Korea, North Korea, and Japan, has to be resumed with a new modus vivendi for establishing the denuclearized zone in Northeast Asia. The diplomatic format to overcome the threat of nuclear weapons is still appropriate for full international cooperation, a matter of the organizational power in the comprehensive international system. Furthermore, a bottom-up organizing for peace is necessary to complete the above-mentioned top-down approach. Korea Peace Appeal is an international campaign that seeks to amplify voices calling for an end to the Korean War and a transition from armistice to peace. More than three hundred seventy South Korean civil organizations, religious groups, individual supporters, and more than seventy international partner organizations, including the World Methodist Council, are participating in the Korea Peace Appeal. The peace treaty should be the final stage of Korean Peace Appeal. The grassroots process of peace treaty movement has to be carried out by resisting the South Korea-US joint military drills, violating a mutual defense treaty between the United States and Republic of Korea. While the US and South Korea describe their exercise as defensive, the drills will reportedly include exercise simulating joint attacks. China, North Korea's main ally, expressed concern over the expansion of US military exercises with its Asian allies, saying they could worsen tensions with North Korea. There is also increasing evidence that the sanctions regime on the DPRK is having adverse humanitarian consequences. Unlike imposing the sanctions against the apartheid, by which the ecumenical parties, including World Methodist Council, triumphantly resisted, we are called by God to be united in deep solidarity for lifting the unethical sanctions, causing adverse humanitarian and developmental consequences, exacerbating rates of domestic violence, sexual violence, and the trafficking and prostitution of women. Therefore, it is appropriate to ponder that D. Tripone Happer said in his address to Fano Ecumenical Conference long time ago in nineteen thirty-four, quote, "There is no way to peace along the way of safety, for peace must be dead." It is the great adventure, great venture. It can never be made safe. Peace is the opposite of security. To demand guarantees is to mistrust, and this mistrust in turn brings forth war," unquote. An emergency caused by mistrust has increased on the Korean Peninsula since US-North Korea nuclear negotiations derailed in early 2019 because of differences over relaxation of crippling US-led sanctions on North Korea in exchange for disarmament steps. Kim Jong-un has since declared North Korea will bolster its nuclear deterrent in the face of gangster-like US pressure and halted all cooperation with South Korea. Furthermore, the COVID-19 pandemic has increased the isolation of North Korea. Borders have slammed shut, trade shutdown, and the besieged mentality caused increasing dependence on nuclear weapons. North Korea has already wound up deadly retaliation against South Korea over its COVID-19 outbreak, which it dubiously claims was caused by anti-North Korean propaganda, leaflets, and other objects flown across the border by balloons launched by certain activists. Mistrust growing and growing. Hannah Arendt said that "The most creative human act is the act of forgiveness, act of forgiveness, releasing the other from the past." Mr. Reverend John Wesley, in his sermon, General Spread of the Gospel, he wrote, quoting Prophet Isaiah, "They shall all know me, not from the greatest to the least, but from the least to the greatest." From the least to the greatest. So we are all intellectuals and the upper class and the greatest people. But we have to begin from the bottom, from the least, the grassroots, the common people. And another quote, this peace movement has to begin from heart to heart, from town to town, from nation to nation. Not international labors, not top-down, but from heart to heart. That's why religious intuition and religious artistic healing and sharing is so important, from heart to heart, from town to town, and from nation to nation. May God bless you and continue to thrive for this peaceful. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Park, for providing the Korean Methodist perspective and also for appreciating Scrap's name and work, especially for feminist approaches to disarmament. Our next speaker is Mr. Malcolm DeBoo, president of the Zoroastrian Trust Funds of Europe. Elected in 2009, Malcolm DeBoo is currently the twenty-sixth president of the Zoroastrian Trust Funds of Europe, the oldest Asian faith-based volunteer organization in the UK. Malcolm is a trustee of the Interfaith Network for the UK, IFN, and co-moderator of the IFN Faith Communities Forum. He is also a founding member of the Faith Forum for London. He is acknowledged in various publications on Zoroastrianism for his assistance, including Zoroastrians in Britain by Soas professor John R. Hinnels. He is one of the contributors to the chapter on Zoroastrianism for the religions in the UK for the Directory of Faiths in the UK, published by the Multi-Faith Center at the University of Derby. He is also currently on the advisory panel of the Soas Shaburji-Palangi Institute of Zoroastrian Studies. Thank you, Mr. DeBoo.
Good afternoon. First of all, I would like to, of course, thank the organizers for inviting me to give an insight on the Zoroastrian thought process on peace and immortality. And I would also like to thank the organizers in this very important conference to include a panel on interfaith dialogue. Because at the end of the day, even in the twenty-first century, millions of people around the world are followers of a faith or religion. And some may call it indoctrination from birth. Some may call it a calling. But whatever it is the case, it does play an important part in our daily lives. Hence, the part of the faith element in dialogue to scrap weapons, to bring about peace, is important. From a Zoroastrian perspective, just for those amongst you who are not familiar or aware of who the Zoroastrians are, we are one of the oldest religious communities which originated from ancient Iran, also known popularly as the Persians. And those amongst you who know about the Persians will also recollect that we had a mighty empire. So frankly, Zoroastrians, I mean, we are, because of the legacy of the Persian Empire, yes, we are expansionist. We are not pacifist by any means. Nevertheless, it's important to recognize that war does not help anybody. War brings about death, carnage, destruction. And of course, since the, towards the end of the dying days of the Second World War, the atomic bomb and with the advent of nuclear proliferation has caused deep anxiety in society, and rightly so. The fact is this, that from a religious perspective, we, from a Zoroastrian point of view, see as the part what we call as evil, collectively or generically. Because Zoroastrianism, our worldview is that initially there was the Holy Spirit, followed by the good mind, which brought about the best truth. And the three attributes, which are attributes of God, brought about the next attribute, the desirable kingdom. And because there's a desirable kingdom, it brought about peace and devotion. And in a sense, this is connected. Because as the speakers before me have spoken, and this does not require rocket science, that amount of money spent on armaments, when there is peace, that money can be spent on national and international projects. Of course, we have got Representative Oxfam, other United Nations agencies will expound on that. But the fact is, without peace, this cannot happen. And if there is peace, there is, we can sort of expound on our various multinational, international projects on bringing about improving society, which brings about perfection, and then the last is immortality. These seven are the basic attributes of God in Zoroastrianism. Now, the point is this, that of course, we all want peace. How can we get it? The previous speaker spoke about a very hotspot in our world, the Korean Peninsula, where it's a legacy of the last days of the Second World War, continued the Korean War, the Cold War, and is still with us today. The speaker before spoke about the Gandhian principles, Ayamsha. The Zoroastrian worldview is that we see a constant battle between good and evil. And evil, from the Zoroastrian point of view, can only be defeated through good thoughts, good words, and good deeds. And it is this goodness, which is godliness, and using our good mind, we believe that the only way forward is to be honest with ourselves. And if you're honest with ourselves, we can then convey our honesty and trustworthiness to our enemy. And I use the word very precisely here. Because our enemy also has got the survival instinct. Our enemy also wants the similar aspects of what we want of peace and perfection in life. How do you manage this? And yes, this is the way one forward is, of course, dialogue is important. The meeting of the hearts, the meeting of the minds comes into play. And it's not easy. Because armaments, for instance, whether it's nuclear or conventional, is big business. And a lot of people are dependent on that particular part, and there's a lot of vested interests. And this is what I come about again, the issue of what I term as evil. And I'm talking about evil as a force here and not as individuals or persons. Because it is the important fact when we come to do disarmaments, when we come to bring about peace, there's always this part of what the force of evil is lurking about, trying to dissuade people, trying to, you know, bring about distrust. We have to overcome it. It's no easy answer. It's a matter of perseverance. Yes, coming back to the Persian Empire, or once, I think you spoke about Isaiah, you had, those days, the battles on the battlefield, like David and Goliath. Come to the First World War, war became total warfare. No part, everybody was collateral damage. As we have progressed into the twentieth century, twenty-first century, yes, the Cold War finished. We thought we'll have peace. Sadly, there is another new challenge has developed. And these challenges will continue all the time. And this is why peace is a journey. It's a matter of perseverance. And whatever religion or no religion or no faith, we are all in it together. Because what is at stake is not only humanity, but those amongst us who believe in God and creation, creation is at stake. And hence, this is imperative that we all come together. And in a one way, I am an optimist, is maybe the Zoroastrian religion teaches us that way. And the reason it is this, the optimism- And the reason it is this, the optimism, is this, that in Zoroastrianism, evil is not connected to God. The speaker from the Gandhian Foundation talked about Ayamsha and the material world. To us, the idea, yes, we also have the material world and the spiritual world. But in our case, the material world is just as good as the spiritual world, because it both comes from God. And hence, it is important to protect it. And that is where our good mind comes into play. And the holiness, because we, again, I use the word, I know some of us may not believe in God, may not believe in faith, but I'm speaking from a faith perspective, that we are created by God to protect the world. We are guardians, we are custodians. And hence, it's important to ensure to persevere for disarmament. Not only nuclear, mind you, conventional too. Because let's face it, although we know that post Hiroshima and Nagasaki, a nuclear weapon as such has not been used in war. But from 1945 till 2022, millions of people have died through conventional war. They are not only dying just now in the Ukraine, they've died in Iraq, Afghanistan, India, Pakistan, Africa, elsewhere. And this is what weapons do. And I say, yes, we are not pacifist. But at the same time, it's important to recognize what the damage warfare is doing. And hence, it's important to support activities of what the United Nations is trying to do, is about trying to bring about the specials, to, you know, ensure to have the United Nations Special Session on Disarmament. Because it is these sort of sessions that bring us all together. And we can see there's more commonality than being disunited. Because that is the only way we'll continue to bring about the peaceful nature, which is a win-win situation for all of us concerned. With those words, thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me to speak here today.
Thank you, Mr. Deboe, for your powerful intervention and support for General and Complete Disarmment. I would like to echo a point you made at the beginning about hosting an interreligious dialogue session. And it is an important part of Scrap Weapons, where we believe that we recognize the importance of having a religious voice in forums such as these, as it brings it further into the real world and outside of stuffy conference rooms, not that this is one. And we hope to be able to extend this conversation in the future. So thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Mohammed Samak, who is the Secretary General of Lebanon's Committee for Christian-Muslim Dialogue. Dr. Samak regrets that he will not be able to participate in our conference today. However, he has sent us a statement to share with us the Islamic philosophical perspective on the importance of interreligious dialogue to advance disarmament. So Dr. Mohammed Samak is the Secretary General of Lebanon's National Committee for Christian-Muslim Dialogue and of the Islamic Spiritual Summit in Lebanon, which consists of Sunni Shia Druze and Alawite Muslims, and is Secretary of the Arab Group for Christian-Muslim Dialogue. He's a member of the Board of Presidents of the World Conference Religion for Peace, New York, and is also a writer and political commentator in Al-Ittihad, Abu Dhabi, and Al-Mustaqbal, Beirut. He holds a PhD in Political Sciences and Islamic Thought at the American Lebanese University. Dr. Samak's message will be read by Scrap Weapons Project Assistant, Amar Al-Hadji. Thank you.
Thank you. So Dr. Mohammed Samak's statement is titled, "Why Disarmament is a Must." From the very beginning, why did God consider it good to create people and to introduce them into his universal plan? I read in the Quran, a conversation between God and his created angels. The Lord said to the angels, "Verily, I'm going to place mankind generations after generations on earth." They, the angels, said, "Will you place therein those who will make mischief, and therein shed blood while we glorify you?" God said, "I know that which you don't know." The old Talmudic story tells us that the angels did in fact try to dissuade God. What good will they be? Ask the angel of truth. "People will be unable to keep from lying," the angels of peace added. "People will never be able to live in peace without quarreling among each other. And so, why not simply give up?" But the wisdom of God had a different plan. God told them, "I know what you don't know," as the Quran says. In fact, it did not long for Adam and Eve in paradise to disobey God's will. Their two sons, one became the assassin and the other the victim. Killing and murder never stopped since then. Few years ago, I was visiting Sweden. In downtown Stockholm, I had a lunch in a small restaurant. I read on the meal list a phrase I'll never forget. It said, "They introduce every day a new weapon of destruction. We offer a new dish." The word "they" is meant those humans who have been imagining the end of the world since we have inherited it. In most of our mythologies, the world ceases to exist before it can begin. Zeus and Odin had to wage total war on their forbears to make way for man. Paleontologists tell us of the five major extinctions, the last of which was brought to the head, in theory, by a mischievous asteroid that didn dinosaurs and coated the world with a thin layer of iridium-rich sediment 66 million years ago. In the 20th century, offered us, which offered us, two world wars, with about 200 million victims and three global stories to follow, fascism, communism, and liberalism. The 21st century shocked us with a fourth, i.e. religious fanatism and terrorism. And now the war in Ukraine, which might put the whole world on a threshold of destruction. With such cultural background, it's enough for a finger to move and uproot all life from earth. No worry, we have all the means to achieve this satanic destructive goal. But then, there will be no other to blame, because there will be no more other. As people see each other as us against them, they are less likely to believe that the other can be trusted. When mutual trust is low, we are less likely to find common ground on divisive issues. Compromise becomes a sign of weakness, and armament becomes a must, then kill before being killed. What we need today is to be mature enough to save our lives and the future generations from ourselves. That's with other simplified approach to prepare a new dish over a new Armageddon. But conflict after conflict, and war after war, and weapons after more destructive weapons, it's clear that we did not learn from our mistakes, not even from our miseries. Were the angels right? After the First and Second World Wars, and after the nuclear explosions, from military Hiroshima in Japan to peaceful Chernobyl in Ukraine, we humans are moving out of an apocalyptic age to a post-apocalyptic age, with fingers on the trigger and closed eyes. Every other day, we know of a new discovery, a new kind of ultrasound nuclear missile, hydrogen bombs, cluster bombs, vacuum bombs, but not a new dish. Now, every single human being is entitled to be killed by this continuous accelerating advanced and accumulated nuclear weapons, at least nine times according to statistics. The bomb dropped on Hiroshima is a child's toy by comparison with today's version. If detonated over Manhattan, it would create a temperature up to five times greater than the center of the sun, extinguishing all life and destroying everything within 150 square miles. We humans never stop inventing, producing, and piling weapons of mass destruction, be it nuclear, chemical, or biological. We go to war to solve problems that cannot be solved but by peace. Ukraine is a current example. The common belief between people of all religions is that God is peace, and peace is the name of God. This means that respect to God is respect to peace. But the real respect is to armaments, violence, terror, and war, all in the name of God. Few years ago, China made a claim based on the discovery of an ancient map made during the Qing Dynasty, that the North Pole is actually an extension of northern China. An air exclusion zone will be implemented, and even Santa Claus will need to file a flight plan or be challenged by the Chinese stealth fighters, stealth fighters. We people of the Abrahamic religions, Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, we did not learn the religious wisdom from our common father, Abraham, where he, by God's will and arrangement, sacrificed a lamb to save the neck of his son. We are still sacrificing our sons generation after generation to save the neck of our lambs. Our short-sighted, our short-sighted and inhumane self-interests. Here I recall Samuel Pickett saying in his letter to Michel, in his letter to Michel, quote unquote, "I have been reading in the Holy Bible the story of the flood and wishing that Almighty had never had a soft spot for Noah." End quote. At the same time, some humanitarian institutions are seeking to develop and apply the technologies that will enable doctors to care, prevent, or manage all diseases during our children's time. We are performing again and again, Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde episode of Care and Kill. Is this the God's plan, which the angels did not know? Religion teaches us that God created us humans to be his viceroy in caring and administrating the world. But neither heavy armament nor climate change is an indication that we are up to this noble mission. The truth is that armament is a self-destructive role, and so is climate change. It's a man-made asteroid that might make us humans modern dinosaurs. We are already facing the destructive consequences of a 1 degree cent rise in global warming. But we boast that we can produce a bomb five times greater than the center of the sun. Here, the UN is watching with firmly closed eyes. Since its creation to promote peace between people, it seems it's still waiting for a Jesus-like miracle to open the eyes of a man born blind. True, the UN cannot impose, but it can, and it should, raise its voice condemning, threatening, and advising. After all, it represents the conscience of all humanity. And by being so, the UN has to raise its voice against this suicidal armament that's going on and on. We humans are already destructively squeezed by climate change and armaments. Both are man-made, and both can and should be dismantled. How? There is a way if there is a will. When? Now, before it's too late. And why? Just to say to the angels that God is right and you were wrong. We humans are God's viceroy. Thank you all, and we thank Dr. Mohammed Samak for his statement. And we would like to add a quick reflection on his statement. We in Scrap Weapons Initiative and Conference today reassure that through the UN Office on Disarmament Affairs and the General Assembly, both of which play a major role in advancing the efforts toward achieving a noble goal of having a safer planet for us humans. It's obvious that the urgency of this current situation we humans are undergoing as a consequence of the rising threat of the use of WMDs or the transfer of such technologies to non-state actors. Therefore, the call for a first special session on disarmament is a need, not a want in such circumstances. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Amar, for sharing Dr. Samak's message. Our final speaker for today is Father Pauline Kobuya, who has kindly joined us from Rome and the Vatican Diocese for Interreligious Dialogue. Father Pauline, born in Congo, has a Master in Theology from the Mary Hill School of Theology in the Philippines, and a Doctorate in Religious Studies from Fujian Catholic University, Taiwan, China. He has served as Executive Secretary for the Commissions for Christian Unity and that of Interreligious Dialogue of the Regional Bishops Conference of China in Taiwan. At the time of his appointment as Under-Secretary of the Diocese for Interreligious Dialogue on 11th November 2019, he was Associate Professor at the Department of Religious Studies in Fujian Catholic University. Thank you, Father.
Thank you very much. Well, I will stay here to try to save time. And I would like not to thank Professor Dan for having invited me and also his team. And also, I'm bringing in all the greetings of Cardinal Miguel Angelayuso, who is the prefect of our diocese. He took part in the webinar of last year that was talking about the same topic. And his idea that not to be very good, not to have this, also not to have, through me, his thoughts for this encouraging session, this moment that is fostering a session not to to call on the UN to hold the long-awaited special session on disarmament. I also want to thank the religious, the panelists for, because of their valuable contribution from the religious sector for peace and disarmament. Also because I think, as Reverend has said, what, religion gives the intuition, it gives the insight. A religious contribution to a reflection aimed at disarmament is very opportune because as citizens, religious people share the concern of this world and are often first in line responding to humanitarian crises caused by wars, by armaments, by armed race, and endemic wars due to the proliferation of light and also all the kind of armament that you've been talking about this morning. But in facing those crises, religious people do not adhere to the self-deceiving philosophy that Paul VI in 1964 has already described, saying that "Under the modern condition, peace cannot be assured except on the basis of an equal balance of armaments." And he was denouncing that already at that time. This philosophy, in fact, sustains and promotes the proliferation of weapons. The mothers of peaceful and stable societies that they foster are centered on the human person as a social creature endowed with spiritual dimensions, whose security come not only from being respected, loved, and trusted by other people, but also by a spiritual being or power to which he or she is connected. Religions are capable of bringing the often unnoticed spiritual dimension in defining a peaceful human society. And I think that's why it's important also to have our panel also this here. And in this, every religion goes back not to its own tradition and scripture. The question is, what do you read and how do you read? Religious people have more than one source of inspiration to turn to while facing difficult situations that might escalate into war and seem that might escalate into war and seem to necessitate a recourse to armaments. It can be argued that pacifism is not the norm in religions today, I think it has been said. In fact, many have stories of war which though revelatory of human propensity to violence have often been interpreted as divinely sanctioned. Regardless of this complicated role of violence in sacred texts, there are also many examples exalting trust in supernatural justice and protection as well as illustrations of one of the derision of trusting in oneself and in manmade weapons for security. The Judeo-Christian scriptures depict that as a lack of judicious wisdom. For there is no more efficacious stronghold than trusting in the Lord. There is a Psalm, Psalm one hundred and eighteen. And also, uh, for this end, David, he confidently declares, "The Lord is with me. I will not be afraid. What can mere mortal do to me? The Lord is with me. He is my helper. I look in triumph of my enemies." Or again, Psalm thirty three, "No king is saved by the size of his army. No warrior escapes by his great strength." But the eyes of the Lord are on those who fear him, on those whose hope is in his unfailing love to deliver them from death and keep them alive in famine." That's Psalm thirty three, sixteen to nineteen. Scripture further teaches that the Lord fights for those who trust in him. They need not to amass weapons, for God takes their side in battle using his own means. For instance, siding with the Israelites on their way to freedom, God defeated Pharaoh and his troops, letting Israel cross the Red Sea and walk toward the promised land. They needed no weapons. They did no battle only only to remain still in trust. Book of Exodus, chapter fourteen, five to thirty one. These examples of religious trust are alternative to the prevailing model encouraging the armed race, which works on the presumption that peace and stability are only guaranteed by readiness for war. Yet, though rooted in human history and human ways, religion takes us beyond the paradigm of war and peace. For instance, in the Christian scripture, the teaching of resurrection brings reflection on peace to a new level that amass the limited logic behind the armed race and war. This operates under the fear of death, which is the ultimate, uh, the ultimate result that arms can cause. Resurrection affirms the victory of life over death and the Christian insistence on love and dialogue instead of fear and mistrust. For Christians, the guiding value of disarmament program is a call to anticipate the victory of resurrection, a new kind of human life after death uh, suffused with divine love and joy. This resurrection, moreover, as seen in Christian scripture, does not bring peace and joy only in this next life, in the next life, but also in our world today. And that's why it's important also not to talk about it now. Now, in the steps of the many of the predecessor of Pope Francis, Pope Francis, he has noted on several occasions that the arms race is based on a culture of fear and suspicion. Individuals and nations are entrapped in armaments and armed race for they see weapons as a source of security. They do not realize the inner contradiction of such a logic and the vicious circle of mistrust and fear in which it entraps people. Among nations whose trust has been eroded, amassing weapons can only be a deterrent of provocation. It cannot foster friendship. It is often similar to that of a two dog not staring at each other in continuous defiance. The antidote to armaments, in fact, is a culture of dialogue that foster mutual trust among individuals and groups and prompts the common good, the only viable long term solution. Christian tradition holds that peace and security are ultimately divine, transcendent realities. This expansive view is a correction to the reductionist logic underpining the armed race, which sets a social peace in the hands of a few decision makers invested with power but too few limits in the task of securing prosperity for the rest of the human community. Aspirations to peace and security are divine, inscribed in the human hearts. We didn't, we did not put them there, but we find them there. We are always longing for another joyful existence. People can collaborate to bring about peace, but its materialization also calls upon the involvement of the divine. Uh, we have in Catholic tradition, a saint, Saint Augustine, who wrote, I quote, "Thou hast made us for thyself, and our heart is restless until it finds its rest in thee." Excluding the religious or spiritual dimension in the quest for a peaceful and secure and secure society easily legitimize the excessive reliance on human means. The Catholic Church has only, has on many occasions denounced the short sightedness of logic that is founded on court, on fear and anxiety and anxious expectation of war. For it is an equal supply of armaments, no mutual trust is the condition for true and lasting peace among nations. That's Patrimony Terrace number one hundred and thirteen. They just stand against all the culture emerging from that logic, including armed race, manufacturing and commerce of arms, proliferation of weapons, uh, nuclear and chemical. The outcry for an end of arms race, reduction of armaments and the ban of nuclear weapons by Saint Paul, the Pope, Paul VI in nineteen sixty four, has remained of actuality. The stockpiles of armaments which have been built up in various countries must be reduced all around and simultaneously by the parties concerned. Nuclear weapons must be banned. A general agreement must be reached on a suitable disarmament program which with an effective system of mutual control. That's again, uh, Patrimony Terrace one hundred and twelve. The present teaching of the Catholic Church does not leave any room for justifying war. Uh, Pope Francis, in his many allocations and messages, opposes opposes and condemns war. I quote, "We can no longer think of a war as a solution because it risks, its risks will probably always be greater than its supposed benefits." In view of this, it is very difficult nowadays to invoke the rational criteria elaborated in earlier centuries to speak of the possibility of a just war. Never again war, end of court. That's in Fratelli tutti, uh, two hundred and fifty eight. He also expects on other believers not to adopt similar attitudes based on their religious conventions, as attested in the opening of the document on Human Fraternity, where again, this is a quote, faith, faith leads a believer to see in the other a brother or a sister to be supported and loved, not an enemy to fight or distrust for any reason. Moreover, no reason should justify war, not even God. For God, the Almighty, has no need to be defended by anyone and does not want his name to be used to terrorize people. That's in Human Fraternity, the document signed together with um, the Imam Al Taib on the fourth of February, two thousand and nineteen. Of course, then there are some concrete antidotes not to the logic of armaments from religions, from everything that has been said here. And I think also Gabrielle has mentioned it, you know, the position of the Vatican is full support for this project of scrap. Um, so religions as institutions can work concretely to provide antidote not to the armed race and contribute indirectly or explicitly to disarmament. Uh, through interreligious dialogue, it is possible not to gather the efforts of various religious organizations and orient them to unleash disarmament among their priorities. Interreligious dialogue is integral to efforts of disarmament because religion touches the heart of humanity. In dialogue, the authentic human values of our religions are revealed, including the common value and goal of peace. Gathering as interreligious partners, it is possible to reflect together on the potential and concrete contribution of religions to fostering a culture of peace. There are many ways religious people and organizations might support the disarmament program. A most direct way of those aware of initiatives such as the one being fostered by scrap would be to support the proposal. The lack of political will among major powers to achieve disarmament is clear. So what religion can do, they can counteract it by informing people about the dangers of proliferation, the inner working of systems that sustain armed race. By increasing awareness about everyone's responsibility to demand a weapon free society, religion can collaborate by forming a growing public awareness of humanitarian consequences of the use of nuclear weapons, of armed race and of the growing burden of military expenditure, especially in developing countries. Such an awareness offers a solid foundation for enlivening a comprehensive approach to disarmament. Religion can build such awareness by publicizing the information and findings of the disarmament yearbook, for instance, by commenting and studying the military expenditure. This is what are agreed upon as expenditure for the common good. Religion can also collaborate by investing and sponsoring research aimed at shedding light on the movements of armaments versus peace, peace building and development programs by studying and unveiling the investments in armaments. In that way, they can ensure that the funding of their own organizations are not invested to finance war and armaments. Religion can call on the conscience, on the consciences of their members, especially politicians and decision makers, to commit policies favoring disarmament. For instance, informed religious organizations can refuse donations from people and institutions who engage in the manufacturing and commerce of weapons and those who are enlisted for the unethical acquisition of natural resources, which in many third world countries are occasioned for wars by procuration. In places where instability exists in order to satisfy the greed of multinationals in search of natural resources, religions, religious institutions can raise the awareness of the local people regarding the traps of war traders and the risks involved in serving as weapon markets for arms manufacturing countries. Religions, religious organizations will succeed in this if they challenge the stereotypes of rich, developed countries at peace and poor, developing countries in unending war and conflicts. If they manage to lead the people to select leaders who are not involved in armed conflicts and whose legitimacy is not based on weapons. Well, uh, to conclude with their vision fixed on what only God can make possible, religious people and organizations will be supportive of disarmament by providing alternative narratives rooted in their rich spiritual traditions and by defining concrete measures to support scrap initiatives. If at any occasion and at any cost, their stand will uncompromisingly include a call for weaponless societies while fostering a competitive civilization that does not fuel war and mistrust among people and nation. With deep gratitude for the chance of sharing with you. Big respect. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Father, for your intervention and for also reiterating the Dicasary's support for Scrap Weapons Call for general and complete disarmament and for your support in a weaponless world. Um, thank you all for your time and participating in our panel and for such a fruitful um, presentation from you all. Uh, we will now be taking a break for lunch and we'll be resuming at two fifteen. For those of you who are joining us at SOAS, please do join us for lunch out in the reception area. Thank you so much.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, um, welcome back for the afternoon, the first session for the afternoon uh, for our conference on convening a fourth special session on disarmament at the United Nations. My name is Martin Butcher. I am the Policy Advisor on Arms Conflict and International Humanitarian Law for Oxfam. Um, having joined Oxfam a decade or so ago to work um, in the team uh, the on the arms trade treaty negotiation. Um, the session, this, this session is contribution from members of civil society. Uh, we have a variety of people at the table here, um, live contributions on Zoom and video messages. Um, so with no further ado, um, I will ask Ben Donaldson, um, who is the lead on disarmament issues for UNA UK, um, to make his presentation.
Um, so first of all, a couple of observations about the state we're in and where we are with disarmament. Um, in two thousand and nine, Ban Ki Moon, then Secretary General of the United Nations, um, said something that will always stick with me and that's that the world is overarmed and peace is underfunded. Um, back then, global military spending was just over a trillion dollars. That's one thousand billion. Um, ten years on, CIPR's latest figures put global military expenditure actually at more than double that figure, um, over two trillion. Um, and another secretary general, Dag Hamerschall, once said, um, that the UN was designed to not to take mankind to heaven, but to save humanity from hell. If for a little bit of context about that figure that I just talked about, um, that two trillion would actually fund the United Nations roughly six hundred and sixty six times, slightly auspicious number, um, when we're talking about, um, about the opportunity cost of all of that spending going into, um, into, into the global militaries. And maybe that's what it will take to, to, um, to save humanity from hell. Um, talking about opportunity cost, we've heard a lot about climate change today and rightly so. Um, the second observation is that war causes climate change um, and climate change causes war. Just two very brief examples about this. There's this new modeling, I'm sure a lot, a lot of you will have seen, published in the Nature Journal, um, about a month and a half, half ago, um, which showed that even a limited nuclear exchange, um, such as that between, um, Pakistan and India would create a worldwide food crisis lasting at least a decade in which hundreds of millions would starve. Um, another dimension to this is the work by scientists for Global Responsibility and Professor Stuart Parkinson, who talked about, um, the need to properly account, um, military, um, carbon footprint or the military bootprint, as he calls it, um, is not part of the Paris Climate Agreement yet. Um, and it's not subject to the same sort of scrutiny, um, that other parts of the industry um, is subject to. Then, and the other observation is this, I want to just quickly mention the unhealthy relationship between ministries of defenses around the world, ministries of defense around the world, university and universities and arms companies. A report that United Nations Association will be releasing later this month, um, along with the campaign to stop killer robots, actually scrutinizes twelve UK based universities. Doesn't include SOAS, actually. Um, you get, SOAS gets, um, gets off lightly on this because, um, because they don't have the same sort of military, um, uh, they, they're not in receipt of the same sort of funds from the UK Ministry of Defense. But these twelve, within these twelve universities that this report does look at, um, there's, there's an incredibly disturbing, um, permissive research environment under which, um, under which, um, program, research programs are being taken. There's a lack of strict policies on teaching, on ethics, on, um, on ethical guidelines themselves, inconsistency in those guidelines and a lack of transparency for how that public money is being spent. There's also, um, direct funded, um, arms companies directly, uh, funding university programs here in the UK, which is also, um, of concern. Lastly, the, the report looks at the risks that the proceeds of that research will actually be used incorporated into lethal autonomous weapon systems, otherwise known as killer robots and the dual use risks of that proliferation. So, um, that, that's a disturbing, a disturbing thing. Um, and just on British public opinion, um, UNA UK did some polling a few years back and it actually found that, uh, um, around half Britain. and it actually found that around half Britons think that when it comes to personal household security, it's more important to have friendly relationships with your neighbors and a good relationship with your community, rather than having strong locks on your doors. And when talking about this, upscaling this to the national context, actually, over half think that this, about 57%, think that at a national level, strong international relations are more important than a powerful military. So actually, there's some political support there, I think we can work with. And it shows that there is sensitivities to sort of human security approaches and not just this hard security trap that we've been sort of led to believe is good for our country or security. And just on the specifics of UN Special Session for Disarmament, it's a neat idea. I work for the United Nations Association, I've got a soft spot for geeky UN ideas and interesting new mechanisms that can be used to further things. I've got a few sort of questions on the process. The process itself, I believe, is the easy bit. Getting the GAT to call for one of these sessions is quite feasible. For example, we've talked about the idea of getting NAMM on board, that would pretty much do the job because a simple majority would be what's needed. My question really for the Scrap team is, what are the prospects for progress actually at the General Assembly Special Session, once we've got there? And what purpose would it serve beyond that which like first committee discussions and other discussions and other forums already serve? And then on terminology, just a short point, let's refrain from calling it the GASSS or GASS because the UN is always getting slammed for all gassing and no action. So that could be a bad omen for this one. You know, the UN can be a bit of a talking shop, and that is a valid criticism of the United Nations. So let's steer away from that. And just in conclusion, I suppose, these are the reasons that I am optimistic and I think we should all support the idea of a GA Special Session. Disarmament is everyone's business. Agency shouldn't be left to those heavily armed states. And this GA Special Session could help all states collaborate with civil society and take ownership of this issue in a sort of holistic way. It could act as a wake-up call because it is precisely, it's not part of the General Chair and the politicized sort of General Assembly. So I do, I do think it could act as a good wake-up call and for states to reflect on the dangerous direction of travel. It's also an opportunity to demonstrate global public opinion. And the act of demonstrating global public opinion itself can be a mobilization to change political will and to like, oh, so if that's what, if that's what all these countries and all these civil society organizations, all these different faith organizations think, you know, maybe, maybe we should talk about this more. And maybe, you know, it could be the start of a useful step, a useful sort of building block towards changing the political dial. So I do think that it's worth pursuing for those reasons. And lastly, I think one of the actual, well, two final points. Firstly, the GA Special Session, it needs to aim for a specific outcome and one that complements existing mechanisms, not one that's going to try and recreate the wheel, as someone mentioned earlier this morning. One way to do this is, I would advise the Scrap team to look carefully at the Secretary General's Our Common Agenda and specifically the new agenda for peace, which is due to be negotiated in 2023, 2024. This is the Secretary General's like big flagship idea, part of his big flagship idea, which kind of stands to fall a bit flat right now because of geopolitics, global tensions, but actually provide a very useful constructive if there was some sort of a cross-discipline body established via this Special Session, you know, that could act as a very good feeding and a very good way to sort of help put some flesh on the bones for what this new agenda for peace could look like. And lastly, I would love if a Special Session was called, a helpful outcome could be to clearly frame this idea of the current military expenditure and the arms buildup we're seeing as a specific strategic risk in its own right and one which disproportionately affects communities in the Global South as well as recognizes the unequal gendered impacts of conflict. Thank you very much, and I'll leave it there and pass them to my fellow panelists.
Thank you very much, Ben. Very interesting presentation with some ideas for what a Special Session can achieve. Apologies to those online, I jumped the gun a little bit. We didn't have the microphones when we started, so you wouldn't have been able to hear me. So just to reiterate, my name is Martin Butcher. I'm Policy Advisor on Arms Conflict and International Humanitarian Law for Oxfam, and I'm chairing this session. So we are now going to move online to contributor Bina Lakshmi Nepram, who is a founder of three different organizations in disarmament and violence reduction, who in 2013 was named by Action on Armed Violence as one of the 100 most influential people in the world working on armed violence reduction, and someone who was a very important part of the campaign to achieve the negotiation of the Arms Trade Treaty, which, as I said before, was the reason that I joined Oxfam. So thank you very much for being with us, Bina, and over to you.
Thank you, Martin, and fellow panelists, and a really big thank you to Scrap Weapons, SOAS, and Interparliamentary Union, whom I work very closely as a board member of International Peace Bureau, and Renner is here with us in the team. I know it's just a session after lunch, and also that there are so many panelists, so I'll be very, very quick, but at the same time to just share all certain concepts. First of all, is usually when the word disarmament at the United Nations, in olden times, was always meant to refer to nuclear disarmament. But it was the former UN Secretary General Buttress Ghali who actually coined the word micro-disarmament to look into the aspects of how small arms and light weapons are creating havoc in the world. And I myself and indigenous women from Manipur in northeast of India bordering Burma have faced this issue. And so the next few, like five to seven minutes that I'm going to like, you know, sort of brainstorm today, I brought a few PowerPoint presentations to show for many of you who are hearing about Manipur for the first time to understand why we started this work on disarmament. So allow me to a little bit of screen share. So this is, yeah. So this is Indigenous Women's Peace Movement and the call and why we are joining this call to activate a special session on disarmament. First of all, why we started, it's really important to understand why we are doing this work. And our work on disarmament didn't start on a project two years ago. We started two decades ago. The story of what happens in a particular part of a world, which is called the Indo-Burma border, northeast of India, home to 100 million people belonging to 300 indigenous groups, where there are 100 armed groups operating and over 500,000 troops of the armed forces. I grew up in Manipur, where a martial law has been imposed here till today, since the year 1958. Just to see how many of the conflict areas where there is heavy weaponization is so beautiful. These are the people, the Lepcha people at the border of northeast of India and China, Tibet. These are the Tagan people from our region bordering China. And to remind us of the continuous displacement of Burma because of the pro-democracy crackdown since last year and for many, many years. And so we continue to work. So the area, the reason why we need to understand militarization, again, these are the ways in which Indian paramilitary is operating in Manipur, my home state. There are 350 military stations here. This is how I grew up. Our life stops at 4:00 PM because in the night when I was growing up, nothing moved except military insurgents. And also at the same time, what happens is this rampant, the reason I'm bringing these images is to drive home the point of how the permanent five members of the UN Security Council produces 88% of the world's weapons. And these weapons are reaching Manipur. United States may have never heard of Manipur, but their weapons are being held by many of our armed groups. These are images from all my research, weapons from my research, weapons from 13 countries have flooded the region. So this is how, for many of you, it's SOAS who are listening to this and students, our work on disarmament, for me, started with the research in my university. And these are some of the aspects of the research. The impact of weapons on our lives is really real. These are images of women that we have worked with, Imma Chandragini, whose two sons were shot dead in one day. Three families of conflicts. These are women from Manipur whom we work with on a day-to-day level in which the heavy rampant proliferation of weapons have let a lot of young men in my region are targeted and gunned down. And we work with many of the families of the survivors. Rape and sexual violence in conflict is a reality. Tangja manorama, arrested, raped, and killed extraditionally by Indian armed forces. If you come to Manipur, when things are better, you will see so many conflict tombs in our region. And hence, the work on disarmament. Because we realized that India, my country, who gave non-violence to the world is now one of the largest suppliers of weapons. We are the second suppliers of United States weapons after Saudi Arabia. So Gandhi must be turning in his grave today. We are no longer the land of non-violence. We are a country which now worship the killer of Gandhi. This is the reality of the world's largest democracy, which we try to change. Now, I have mapped out weapons which are flooded in my region. And again, as I mentioned, my association with the United Nations started with my master's thesis. It is this work which Safer World in UK recognized, and it was them who actually brought me to start work on United Nations Program of Action. I led Oxfam South Asia Program on an International Arms Trade Treaty. This is the work that has been done in the past years in India. And we realized that we need to set up organizations. That's how we started the Manipur Women Gun Survivors Network. And then we also founded the Control Arms Foundation of India. We have an office in Manipur and we have an office in Delhi. Now, why do, you know, that's why in the work of disarmament, I myself, being indigenous, I realize how indigenous women, particularly in India, the world's largest democracy, have been leading. We have amazing historical ways in which we have, you know, looked at issues of gender and disarmament. And we have also demonstrated that disarmament, you know, papers at the UN should be converted into action on the ground. And I've seen the mothers and grandmothers of Manipur were really asking for peace and disarmament in these parts. Our generation carried on the work by starting the Northeast India Women Initiative for Peace. And we were able to write books because we have a very strong scholarship. We're able to get action on the ground. We also drafted in this legislation. We also raised issues in the Indian Parliament. And at the global level, we came to the UN. And also, we worked with many, many and started alliances, particularly because indigenous people live in biodiversity hotspots where 80% of the world's conflicts is currently there, where arms are flooding many of our regions. So that's why we started the Global Alliance Indigenous People. We now work in seven social indigenous cultural zones of the world. And my final point, I have been a part of many UN programs. On UN Program of Action on the Arms Trade Treaty, you name a disarmament treaty, and I have been a part of it. But at the same time, we need to ask why these are not working the way it should. And that's why I have faith that good, committed organizations, whether you're connected with universities, which are not funded by arms groups, we have to really have the ethics because the world depends on us. Some of the elements, I feel, that we have to work towards UN Special, which include and engage more women and grassroots peace organizations, indigenous people and those affected by conflicts and dispute. Avoid the mistakes made by earlier governments, which were exclusionary in nature. As I mentioned, we need to negotiate that the UN permanent members, who produce 88% of the world's weapons, we are now evolving the work decolonizing the UN because UN, as we all know, started after World War II. Now, we need to decolonize the process of disarmament. What it means is very simple, be more inclusive, get more people who are affected, like us, affected by conflict. We will be, would love to work together. And again, as Ben also mentioned earlier, we need to reduce the budget in military spending. Without this, we will not be able to, you know, bring about a world with peace. Global North and Global South organizations and communities, institutions, scholars, youth need to work collectively together. Without this, we will not be able to do everything at the UN. And finally, as I mentioned, military spending costs, this beautiful graphic I found online, and we need to really ensure that this is reduced because without that, we cannot achieve sustainable development. And with two beautiful slides, this is in solidarity with the people of Burma. Inasmuch they are oppressed and repressed and killed, still the people were able to create art forms with flowers, asking that the people of Burma are able to get peace and justice. Another image of, from the Designing Peace Exhibition at the Smithsonian Cooper Design Museum, in which there is a mother with a gun with a flower there. These are the ways in which we have to resist. And we have to, again, the United Nations, I call, the way I explain United Nations to a village in Manipur is like this. We have our parents, if the parents, which are like our nation-states. If the parents do not listen, we go to the grandparents, which I call the United Nations. You walk into the United Nations, you see this beautiful mural. Do unto others as you know to have them unto you. A beautiful reminder that if nation-states are producing weapons of war, if they want to leave a legacy for their grandchildren and children of peace, then they have to stop the wars which they are producing in different parts of the world, particularly in Global South, particularly indigenous, black, brown communities. So with this, I join the clearing call and say, thank you, Yamnengoyjiri, in my indigenous language, and join the clearing call of each and every organization, individuals, students, committed individuals, religious leaders, and diplomats to be able to bring, you know, and activate. The UN is created for peace, and it should not just be just a special session. The UN should wholeheartedly embrace disarmament as the cardinal principle. And we will not rest till this is done because the UN is a part of us as much as we are a part of the United Nations of the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bina, for your passion and your expertise that makes you such an important advocate for disarmament and for human rights. Thank you also for your brevity as we're running, as everyone knows, quite late. So we're needing to try and pick up a bit of time. So I will just, as quickly as anything, introduce one of my bosses, Danny Sri Skandaraja, the Chief Executive Officer of Oxfam GB, who has prepared a video message for us, which we will hear now.
Hello, I'm Danny Sri Skandaraja, Chief Executive of Oxfam Great Britain. Thank you for inviting Oxfam to be part of this important event. Oxfam is a global humanitarian and development NGO that's been working to alleviate poverty and suffering around the world since we were founded 80 years ago. But since the 1990s, we've campaigned for arms control and disarmament measures. And of course, we wholeheartedly support a call for a fourth UN General Assembly Special Session on disarmament as a means to support our core goals. People often ask, why would a poverty reduction NGO be working on arms control and disarmament? And for me, the answer is simple. Poverty, armed violence, and conflict are linked in a cycle that prevents peace, that furthers human rights abuses, and that hampers development. I mean, the UN Charter calls on us all to work towards general and complete disarmament as part of the establishment and maintenance of international peace and security with the least diversion for armaments of the world's human and economic resources. I think without controlling arms, it is impossible to ensure security. Without security, economic development is impossible. And so while the guns pour in, our communities can never be safe. That's what our partners often tell us. And that's the argument that links the Arms Trade Treaty, for which we campaigned for 20 years, to the accomplishment of the Sustainable Development Goals today. And now we need to go further than individual treaties. We've seen a resurgence of great power confrontation in Europe and Asia. And at the same time, as conflicts related to poverty, hunger, and climate change grow across the world. And as arms racing resumes, this is the ideal time for a fourth UN General Assembly Special Session on disarmament. We need to relaunch the movement for arms control. We need to relaunch the movement for arms control and disarmament as contributors to sustainable human security. Arms control is explicitly referenced in SDG Goal sixteen point four on Controlling Illicit Arms Flows. And so reducing arms and limiting their use would underpin the achievement of many SDGs. SDG one on reducing poverty, two on ending hunger, four on good health, five on reducing gender-based violence, eleven on creating sustainable cities and communities, seventeen on partnerships, I could go on. Our experience shows us the global community needs to act on this now. From our experience of humanitarian programming in fragile and conflict-affected states, uh, we've seen the imperative to act in places like Yemen, Syria, the occupied Palestine Palestinian territories and Israel, Central African Republic, South Sudan, Mali and elsewhere. Controlling arms requires transparency. Transparency in military affairs and providing the legislative, administrative and legal frameworks that make implementation possible. This will bring further benefits. Parliamentary scrutiny over arms procurement, stockpiling and transfers will bring accountability of government and security forces, enhancing good governance in such areas as customs, stockpile safety and security, civilian oversight of the military, oversight of procurement and many other areas. They also give states an enhanced sense of security as they can understand far better their neighbors' security postures. This won't be easy. Wealthier states can afford treaty implementation. Those with less resources will need financial and technical assistance. In two thousand and fifteen, the total ODA eligible expenditure on security sector reform activities, which can underpin arms control and disarmament, amounted to only nine hundred and seventy-two million US dollars. We encourage all donor states to, uh, build security by paying for arms control and disarmament as a tool to reduce conflict. Oxfam remains committed to working with you towards a world where arms control helps underpin economic development, reduce poverty and suffering and human harm across the globe. And we look forward to participating at the next Special Session on Disarmament. Thank you.
Without delay, I'm going to move on. Um, we, uh, had hoped to have Dr. Francesco Lenci of the Pugwash Conferences on Science and World Affairs with us today. But unfortunately, um, for personal reasons, um, he's unable to be here. So, um, his statement will kindly be read by Harry Spencer, um, who is a board member of Student Young Pugwash UK and a scholar who has recently graduated with a master's in international relations from the University of Birmingham, um, where his research focused, uh, focuses on nuclear strategic theory and the security implications of emerging technology. Harry, over to you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Um, good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see you all back for the, uh, afternoon sessions. Um, before I again, I would just like to start off by issuing my thanks to Scrap Weapons and for all my Pugwash support for having me to come and, uh, deliver this statement today. Um, before I proceed any further, as one should, uh, with material that isn't their own, um, I'd like to declare that this was written by someone else. And therefore, um, it's important to, moving forward, to appreciate that not everyone here will necessarily reflect my opinions or anyone else's affiliated to me. Without further ado, following the concluding appeal of the Russell Einstein Manifesto of nineteen fifty-five, in nineteen fifty-seven, twenty-two scientists coming from the United States, the Soviet Union, Japan, United Kingdom, Canada, Australia, China, France and Poland met in the small village of Pugwash in Nova Scotia, Canada. The manifesto, signed two years earlier by Bertrand Russell, Albert Einstein and nine other eminent scientists, among whom Joseph, Joseph Rotblatt, who remains the only scientist to have left the Manhattan Project in December nineteen forty-four, when it was clear that Germany would never possess nuclear weapons. The manifesto called the scientists of the entire world, regardless of their political affiliation, to discuss together the existential threat to human civilization represented by atomic weapons. Uh, manifesto in quote, regarded in view of the fact that any future world war, nuclear weapons will certainly be employed and that such weapons threaten the continued existence of mankind. We urge the governments of the world to realize and acknowledge publicly that their purpose cannot be furthered by a world war. And we urge them consequently to find peaceful means for the settlement of all matters of dispute between them. From nineteen fifty-seven to present times, Pugwash has continued to organize meetings, symposia, workshops, study groups and further events with scientists and experts in scientific matters across the world to promote peace, disarmament, nonproliferation, especially where weapons of mass destruction are concerned. More than four thousand people have participated in Pugwash activities. All participating is in an individual capacity, neither representing government nor external organizations. Pugwash was also active throughout the Cold War, mainly offering communication channels between different groups. This allowed Pugwash to play a background role during the crises, such as that of the Soviet missiles in Cuba, in Vietnam. And among other occasions, also for the initiation of negotiations on the Nuclear Weapons Nonproliferation Treaty, the Nuclear Test Prohibition Treaty, the various negotiations between the US and the USSR on arms control, the Biological Chemical Weapons Conventions and the Nuclear Weapons Prohibition Treaty. In recent years, Pugwash has sought to keep open communication between warring parties in Afghanistan. It helps reduce the differences on the issues regarding Iranian nuclear and conflict programs in the Middle East, as well as to try and stimulate discussion on regional and world security. Pugwash conducted expert talks on various projects, such as the prohibition of nuclear weapons, the so-called killer robots and other devices without human control. The tech, uh, the development of offensive cybernetic systems and other weapons technologies that we continue to see today. Pugwash in nineteen ninety-five, in collaboration with its partner Joseph Rotblatt, was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for their contributions to reducing the role of nuclear weapons in international politics and also for the future elimination of all nuclear weapons stockpiles. In twenty seventeen, with great tenacity, a hundred and twenty-two nuclear states managed, uh, non-nuclear countries managed to negotiate and adopt a treaty that prohibits all nuclear weapons and offers a way for destruction of all existing arsenals. In June this year, the first meeting of TPNW state parties was held in Vienna. And even representatives of non-party states contributed to that discussion, namely including Ger- Germany, the Netherlands and Norway. Up to now, more than sixty have ratified it, but armed powers oppose it and have stated that they will continue to develop their nuclear capacity. They are co-established as persistent opponents to this treaty, thus hoping to prevent its acceptance as a norm of customary international law. The TPNW is a clear demonstration of the categorical refusal of the majority of countries in the world and peoples to the acceptance of continued existence of nuclear weapons. We must continue working to overcome the objections of nuclear countries and to strengthen membership of the TPNW, including those who depend on this so-called umbrella, that is, defense packs that provide for the use of nuclear weapons belonging to countries which are not resident. The Vienna, and in Vienna, the state parties did more than just reiterate their opposition to nuclear weapons. They also adopted a concrete action plan for implementing said treaty. The Vienna Action Plan structured around six main sections. The universalization of the treaty, steps towards total elimination of nuclear weapons, measures to address the human and environmental effects of nuclear use, institutionalizing scientific and technical advice, the relationship between the Nuclear Ban Treaty and nuclear disarmament and the nonproliferation regime, and other matters essential for achieving that treaty's goals, including not least principles for inclusivity, cooperation and gender provisions within that treaty. The question of first use of nuclear weapons remains one of the most important issues of our current times. Many civil society organizations and experts advocate the importance of nuclear countries pledging not to use their nuclear weapons first. The main argument in favor of this is of course that if all nine current arsenal owners accept this commitment, the danger of a nuclear war will be greatly mitigated. This include, these actions can include de-alerting, eliminating launch-on-warning postures, lowering threat postures and adopting policies of no first use or sole-purpose deterrence. Of course, an NFU declaration cannot be considered as an objective in and of itself, only a consti- only to constitute a concrete step towards universal disarmament. Last year, Presidents Putin and Biden met in Geneva. They reaffirmed the understanding of Ronald Reagan and the now-late Mikhail Gorbachev that in nineteen eighty-six, a nuclear war can neither be won nor can it ever happen. Now, we hope that other countries recognized by the NPT, China, France and the United Kingdom, will join it with a declaration that can be solemnly made in the Security Council. Biden and Putin had agreed to initiate a dialogue on strategic stability that they believe would lay the foundations for future arms control measures and in reducing the risk of our current stockpiles of weapons. Unfortunately, the actual situation is severely, is severely dramatic and risky, inherently caused of the war of Ukraine, which currently and tragically was initiated by the President Putin on February twenty-fourth this year. Since nineteen sixty-two Cuban Missile Crisis, the world has never had such a dangerous operational environment. But while the Cuban Missile Crisis lasted thirteen days without a war, the war in Ukraine seems to set to continue for further months. On Friday, August twenty-sixth, after four weeks of deliberations, the Tenth Review Conference on the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty concluded that no final agreement. The United Nations Under Secretary General for Disarmament Affairs Izumi Nakamoto said, "I would say that the implication of the Ukrainian war was the biggest reason for this conference, uh, this conference being unable to adopt the consensus document now." NPT is a crucial and most important element of the multilateral disarmament. And unfortunately, working this direction is now consequently made more difficult. "We keep on hoping that new negotiations between Russia and Ukraine can take place, according to Pope Francis's appeals and the Pugwash mission promoting dialogue among divides." For sure, civil society organizations like Pugwash and academia need to step up the campaign for nuclear disarmament and peace. The Russell Einstein Manifesto itself concluded with, and I quote, "There lies before us, if we choose, continual progress in happiness, knowledge and wisdom. Shall we instead choose death because we cannot forget our quarrels? We appeal as human beings to human beings. Remember your humanity and forget the rest. If you can do so, the way lies open to a new paradise. If you cannot, there law, there lies before you the risk of universal death." In a recent statement, Pugwash proceeded to identify a number of urgent tasks for our time. First was to promote the widest possible awareness and understanding of present nuclear dangers as they evolve. The second would be to promote in particular the end of the conflict in Ukraine with reasonable compromises and respect for various regional diversities, taking into account the legitimate security concerns of different parties. The war will not be sold by, uh, sold by further shipments of weapons, but by taking established and effective negotiation. Third was to support an urgent ceasefire in Ukraine that would permit a meaningful, start to meaningful negotiations and the start of reconstruction of a devastated country with international support. The last was of course, support in all possible ways, the restoration of the JCPOA agreement with Iran. We wish to conclude this, uh, wish to close this concluding statement with a paragraph of two-six-two from Pope Francis's Fratelli Tutti. "International peace and stability cannot be based on the false sense of security, the threat of mutual destruction or total annihilation, or on simply trying to maintain balance of power. In this context, the ultimate goal of the total elimination of nuclear weapons comes both as a challenge and as a moral and humanitarian imperative." We conclude therefore with a, uh, with the same conclusions of Joseph Rotblatt, who wrote for Bulletin of the Atomic Scientists in nineteen eighty-five, the fortieth anniversary of the bombings of Hiroshima. He said, and I quote, "After forty years, one question keeps nagging me. Have we learned enough not to repeat the mistakes we made then? I'm not so sure even about myself. Not being an absolute pacifist, I cannot guarantee that I would not behave in the same way should a similar situation had arisen. Our concepts of morality seem to get overthrown once military action starts. It is therefore the most important thing not to allow such a situation to develop. Our prime effort must concentrate on the prevention of nuclear war because such a war not only morality, but the whole fabric of civilization would disappear. Eventually, however, we must therefore aim at the elimination of all kinds of war." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Harry, and, um, thank you to Dr. Lenci, um, who wrote that statement. Um, next we're going to another video message, um, from Grace Arau, the Executive Director of Women Volunteers for Peace in Kenya. Um, Grace is a, Grace is a young Kenyan woman, um, who, uh, is, as I said, the Executive Director of Women Volunteers for Peace, um, which is a community-based organization focusing on building resilience and the capacity of young women and girls through peace education, conflict prevention and resolution, um, through, from a trauma healing informed perspective. Um, this is an important message, um, from, uh, from somebody in the Global South. So, um, we'll hear Grace now.
Hello, my name is Grace Adamborao and I am joining in from Kenya, um, the western part of Kenya, that is Kisumu County. And I am twenty-six years old and today I am excited to join at this particular conference to tell my story. Um, so I am a YouTuber. I call myself a peace YouTuber. And my work is to tell stories of young women and, um, young women and men on their work and contribution towards peace and development in the African continent. Um, but I am also the Executive Director of Women Volunteers for Peace, uh, famously known as WOP, which is a young women-led, community-based organization, uh, based in the Lake Region, um, a part of Kenya. And what we do is to work with girls and young women aged between thirteen and thirty years old. And these young women have been trained as champions and agents of peace. And they form a bigger part of three hundred and fifty-seven, um, network that we are working in. And you realize that young women and girls faces a lot of discrimination in the society, especially in Kenya now that, um, we are headed towards elections and political, uh, um, violence, uh, you know, related to, you know, issues of elections, but also historically, we've known how conflicts related to politics, um, affects women and girls majorly. So it may work in the community and in attempt to bridge the gap between global policies and local actions. I would love to call upon the UN to activate the UN Fourth Special City sooner than later because these are some of the reasons that I would want to put across. One, Africa is a continent that continues to be attacked by terror groups daily, especially in Kenya. There's a lot of instances where we have witnessed terror attacks. And the people who are targeted most, who becomes victims of such circumstances are women and children. We don't need to see more women and girls die. We need to have them become part of the decision-making table. We need to see them participate fully in disarmament. And thirteen twenty-five talks about active involvement and participation of women and girls in peace processes. And that is where young women like myself comes in. We need to see the UN Fourth Special Session talking about how women are affected differently, how girls and children are affected differently in, um, armed conflict. And in today's world, it is a home to the generation of young people. And my generation especially forms ninety percent of, you know, the total population, I would say, in, in Sub-Saharan Africa. And young people have a critical role to play in disarmament. Because one, young people are the perpetrators. They are the active participants when it comes to armed conflict. Also, you realize that thirteen twenty-five, which talks about the active involvement of young women in peace processes, it is very key because women and girls forms a huge number of people who undergo sexual and gender-based violence, including in emergency situations and especially now in Kenya, uh, elections are around the corner. And you see that more women and girls are affected and the fear that comes along with elections is real. And I just want to tell a bit of my story. Um, now in twenty twenty-one, I happened to have, um, participated in a conference that was calling on youth inclusive, um, participation in peace processes. And in that process, I was able to, you know, I receive a lot of threats afterwards because I was talking about my work, I was talking about my community and how especially girls and young women have been used not only as empathizers to violent extremist groups, but they've also been used to recruit their fellows into such groupings. And during that time, um, when I talked about my work, then I received threats. And issues about protection is also very key. Young women and girls are increasingly becoming targets by the criminal gangs. And in many constituencies where they're used as, you know, recruiters and surveillance to pass radical information to their peers. Therefore, girls and young women require sensitization and economic empowerment, especially for self-reliance. for self-reliance, but also just to ensure that they form part of the decision-making tables. They contribute towards the development and the peace processes that we are able to see now. And so the Fourth Special Session on Disarmament should present the unique opportunity to advance our shared goal, which is a general and complete disarmament, and especially putting young people at the apex of prevention and active participation. Uh, I would love to also share that the School of Oriental and African Studies University of London, that is, uh, SARS University of London, has been really my inspiration, because my interest is in the university being a leading high education institution that is specialized in the study of Africa as a continent, among other continents. So I would love to, you know, if possible, that I get a support to study in this particular, um, institution, to pursue a course that, uh, is on research, to, um, to work on any contemporary issues that emerges in Africa, but especially in the context of disarmament, because that is my area of work. I would love to say that I support and appreciate the great efforts of Scrap Weapons for building a community to support the working group that is convening the, you know, the, this Fourth Special Session on Disarmament. This conference will constitute towards the agenda for the UN General Assembly, and I'm looking forward to this session being activated by the UN General Assembly and actually taking active participation.
An excellent message, and, um, in, in the spirit of putting young people at the apex of our movement, we now move to Lucy Tiller, um, who, uh, recently completed an M Phil at the University of Cambridge and is now working in global health advocacy. I also noticed from her bio, um, that she is a co-convenor of Youth and Student Campaign for Nuclear Disarmament, and the student part of that is a job that I held, um, forty years ago. Um, so over to you, Lucy.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, friends. Um, as just mentioned, I'm Lucy, and I'm the outgoing chair now of the, of Youth for the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. We were launched in twenty twenty one as a focal point for young leaders and advocates for the abolition of nuclear weapons. We wanted to create a disarmament organization for youth and by youth, which would provide a starting point for those just entering the movement and leadership opportunities for those who have a really clear vision for youth engagement in disarmament. Youth for TPNW is now a global network, including Grace, actually, who we just heard from, contributing underrepresented voices to the disarmament movement. The organization promotes collaboration, networking, and bridge-building between youth from around the world, and also between youth experts and other leaders. Alongside our partners, including Scrap Weapons, we organized the Youth MSP for the Meeting of State Parties of the TPNW, which took place in June twenty twenty two. This event brought over one hundred and thirty young people to the MSP online and in person in Vienna, platformed young voices, and opened up space for discussion about the future of youth engagement with the movement. Where are the young people? Why aren't your generation interested in disarmament? How can we get more young people into our organization? Some of you will have been asked these questions, and some of you may have asked them of your younger colleagues. As a young person involved in disarmament, I am not exaggerating when I say that in most meetings, I am the youngest person there by thirty or forty years. This is actually the most pronounced I've noticed in campaigning groups and NGO spaces. It is fantastic that we have so much wisdom and experience in this movement, and that we can draw on decades of knowledge represented in our movement. But we need to invigorate a new generation of activists, policy experts, and advocates if there is going to be a future. It is fantastic to see organizations like Scrap and my own organization, Youth for TPNW, beginning to do the work of creating a new generation of young leaders on disarmament. Young people have the most to lose from a failure of disarmament policy. We are already set to inherit a planet which is flooded and burning. Add to that the threat of nuclear war, and we're not looking at a particularly bright future. But it doesn't have to be like that. This is a moment of challenge, but it's also a moment of opportunity. As more and more states sign and ratify the TPNW, we are able to move closer to a world free from nuclear weapons, a world where the international community can unite to secure its own future, free from imminent nuclear threats. It is vital that youth voices are platformed and empowered. Young people are the leaders of tomorrow, and as such, we must be included in conversations about our future. But young people are not just the leaders of the future, we are the largest generation in history. We are not people in waiting, we are affected by decisions made by our governments and global decision-making bodies now. We have a right to contribute to conversations about national and international security. At Youth for TPNW, we advocate for the complete abolition of nuclear weapons through the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, and we advocate for youth voices as an absolutely vital part of that conversation. The failure of the NPT to reach a consensus only a few weeks ago shows us that we do need something new. We need to empower civil society, state representatives, NGOs, religious representatives, students, academics, young people, and those who have been involved in this movement for decades. It's from this position that I wholeheartedly support the call for a new special session on disarmament. Disarmament is urgent, and for young people, it is not a nice-to-have. It's necessary for our survival and for our planet's future livability. It's so good to see the broad coalition which Scrap have brought together for this conference today, because we need our urgent conversations to bring together voices from all across society. And that goes beyond what I've just been talking about, about including young people and goes into inclusion and openness on all levels, uh, including making meaningful spaces for NGOs and civil society and decision-making spaces. I would really recommend to all of you, um, PSR's Jasmine Owens's recent Inkstick media article, in which she wrote a response to the frosty reception which civil society received at the NPT Review Conference. In it, she said, and I quote, "However impressive the NGO statements were, their sentiments were heard by only a handful of state delegates. They allowed NATO a prime-time slot and tossed NGOs at the end of the week when most delegates were already gone." This was after having to fight tooth and nail to even be allowed to attend the conference. For many people trying to come from non-Western countries, the hurdles they had to surpass and hoops they had to jump through ultimately prevented their participation at all. With the excessively stringent and tedious structures of several Western states visa processes that are almost impossible to navigate, especially if you come from a non-Western country, I am no longer surprised at the sea of mostly white faces I see around me as, uh, among civil society participants. And then she goes on to say, "To abolish nuclear weapons and rid ourselves of the constant existential threat that they impose on our daily lives, whether we realize it or not, will take all of us. Our pending a seventy-seven-year nuclear status quo is no small feat, but it can and will be done by the people for the people. There's no time to wait for institutions such as the NPT to catch up with our rapidly deteriorating reality. We must fight for this future or risk having no future at all. I don't know about you, but I know which option I choose," end quote. I support the calls for a special session on disarmament, but we must make sure that any such space does not repeat the exclusions of the past, including the very recent past. There are practical ways to do this, we use a support, for example, in fully hybrid meetings like the one we're having today, as well as more general points about creating a culture of welcome and platforming underrepresented voices. We need renewed urgency, renewed diversity, and renewed optimism in this movement. We've been working towards disarmament as a movement for a really long time, and it's easy to start feeling like it isn't actually possible to achieve global zero. But when I talk to the young leaders of Youth for TPNW, they convince me that our goal is in fact possible. Youth for TPNW is only a year old, but we've already brought young voices to the disarmament discussion at all levels, provided a genuinely open platform for people getting involved in this movement, and invigorated each other with much-needed urgency and optimism. I'm genuinely excited for what's next. If you want to see more young people involved in disarmament, please do come and have a chat with me afterwards about what Youth for TPNW is doing to open up high-level decision-making spaces and build a movement of young leaders in this space, or to talk more about practical and concrete ways to broaden engagement in your movement or your organization with younger people. It is, I promise you, my favorite thing to talk about. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Lucy. That's a, a great message about inclusive disarmament work, which is so important. Thank you. So now we're going to move back to Zoom, um, to the Honorable Patricia Torsney. Patricia was, um, Member of Parliament in Canada for Burlington, Ontario, from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand and six. And since two thousand and fourteen, she has been the permanent observer of the Interparliamentary Union to the United Nations. Um, thank you for being with us, Patricia.
Thank you, uh, thank you all for, uh, for being there. Um, I noticed, uh, Martin, at the beginning you talked about the role of NGOs, and of course, the IPU is not an NGO. Um, it represents parliamentarians, and, um, uh, let me just say that we've heard some fantastic presentations. So as has already been noted, um, twenty twenty one marked a turning point when the yearly, uh, global military spending surpassed two trillion US dollars. And as others have mentioned, this trend is only worsening as international tensions increase throughout twenty twenty two. We are witnessing increased investments in militarization and rearmament from governments right around the world. And as Lucy said, we must address this reality collectively with the sole priority of the right of citizens to be free from violence and free from conflict. You know, military expenditure should not be thought of just as resources spent on armament, but as resources not spent on education and healthcare and the environment, public facilities, peace, development, science, the arts, or investing in the economy. In this context, this is a very timely gathering to address the activation of a fourth special session of the UN General Assembly on Disarmament. And when it comes to disarmament, the role of parliaments may not be the first thing that comes to all of your minds. Yet parliaments have a legislative function that translates key UN disarmament and nonproliferation efforts into legislation, which is debated and adopted, and then the process better understood by the people. Parliaments have an oversight function. They can hold their governments accountable, posing questions in the House or in committees, and examining specific governmental choices. Parliaments pass national budgets and can shed light on the efficiency and effectiveness of public money, raising questions to the government approving or vetoing those budget bills. Many parliamentarians work to reduce military spending, favoring other considerations for a more human aspect of security, such as education or healthcare. And finally, their representative functions give parliamentarians the ability to carry the voices and concerns of all their citizens, including Grace, and the voices of young people, and Bonnie, and the people she's concerned about, and ensure that decisions and legislation reflect their reality and their needs. They can raise awareness about disarmament in their parliaments and in their constituencies, often side by side with NGOs, and they can highlight the lived experience of citizens like Bonnie impacted by the proliferation of weapons of all sorts. These parliamentary functions can and should be used to promote the activation of a fourth UN Special, General Assembly Special Session devoted to disarmament, lobbying governments to provide support to the working group on convening the Fourth Special Session directly and by engaging constituents, political parties, and civil society organizations. Parliaments and parliamentarians are key stakeholders in this agenda. They represent the people of their countries, people whose first wish is to live in peace and in a secure environment that allows their families to thrive and to succeed. And to succeed in reaching that aim, parliaments have two major approaches at their disposal. Focus on human security, creating an enabling environment for human development, and extend the concept of security beyond the physical security of people to include health, the economy, political rights, and the environment. And focus on common security. One country's security cannot be achieved at the expense of others, and joint efforts such as nuclear disarmament, strong limitations on conventional weapons, and reduced military spending are needed. These approaches are key to the IPU's work on peace and security, they're at the core of our disarmament endeavors, because it's been proven that by investing in human and common security are quick ways to ensure prosperity in the long term. Weapons of mass destruction restrict the sustainable resolution of conflicts and constantly threaten the survival of humanity. And because the illicit, because the illicit and illicit proliferation of conventional weapons worsens the conditions of most vulnerable people in conflict zones and developing nations, significantly increasing the escalation of local, regional, and international disagreements toward armed conflict. So the IPU works in several ways to enhance parliamentary action on disarmament, raising awareness that leads to concrete outcomes. Our efforts to help ensure multiple parliaments reported their annual military spending to the UN Military Expenditure Database following a webinar on the role of MPs in curbing military spending is one example. IPU worked with speakers of several parliaments that had not yet signed or ratified the Armstrong Treaty. Philippines and Gabon successfully ratified the treaty, and we just got message during this session that Gabon will submit its instrument of ratification next month, after a parliamentary champion promoted this action. IPU invited specific parliaments to a roundtable organized by the Comprehensive Nuclear Test Ban Treaty Organization during the hundred and forty-fourth assembly in New Sedua, just in March, opening concrete channels of communication that facilitated the ratification of the treaty by multiple parliaments. Timor-Leste and Tuvalu were added to the list of ratifying nations, bringing the treaty two steps closer to universalization. IPU vigorously promotes the joint publication Assuring Our Common Future, and you can get that on our website at ipu.org. It's a guide to parliamentary action and supportive disarmament for security and sustainable development, raising awareness about the concrete actions parliaments can take on every field of disarmament. And lastly, our webinars engaged hundreds of stakeholders, including parliamentarians and parliamentary staff, and also civil society organizations, government organizations, experts, members of the academia, and other disarmament activists and enthusiasts. We'll continue to assist parliamentarians championing the activation of this fourth special session in their respective parliaments, promoting disarmament as a forward-looking solution to contemporary issues. We remain willing to support disarmament and invite any parliamentarian, as Lucy just did, to reach out and help us raise this issue from their perspective, parliaments. I will now have the pleasure, well, actually, Martin might do this, of introducing, uh, the Honorable Dimitria Gliga, the Member of the Romanian Parliament, who will speak on behalf of the Parliamentary Assembly of the Mediterranean, uh, and provide us with a more regional perspective from the Euro-Mediterranean and Gulf countries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. It is a pleasure to be here, representing the Parliamentary Assembly of the Mediterranean, Pam, in this very timely event in front of such a prominent audience. At Pam, we follow with interest and concern the current international discussions on disarmament and nuclear proliferation. Nuclear proliferation and weapons control are essential elements to address in order to reach a stable and peaceful Euro-Mediterranean region. We are living complex and delicate times. To quote the UN Secretary General, humanity is just one misunderstanding, one miscalculation away from nuclear annihilation. Almost thirteen thousand nuclear weapons are held in arsenals around the world, and according to international analysts, there are clear indications that the reductions that have characterized global nuclear arsenals since the end of the Cold War have ended due to renewed geopolitical military confrontation, competition, and technological advancement. All of the nuclear armed states are increasing or upgrading their arsenals, and most of them are sharpening nuclear rhetoric and the role that nuclear weapons could play in their military strategies, or even worse, in their aggressive imperialist and anachronistic dreams. The brutal military aggression of Russia against Ukraine has seriously undermined the efforts of the international community on disarmament and the control of nuclear. Russian officials use dangerous rhetoric and repeated tweets of escalating the conflict to nuclear warfare. The country's recent decisions to block the tenth review conference of the Treaty on the Nonproliferation of Nuclear Weapons or its opposition to the demilitarization of Zaporozhye, nuclear, planted in the occupied territory of Ukraine, clearly and unilaterally endangered the security of the European continent and the entire world. This is the demonstration of how far-reaching the impact of Russia's aggressions against Ukraine has become. I would like to recall that, even at some of the gloomiest moments of the Cold War, cooperation in support of the Nonproliferation Treaty was often cooperation in support of the Nonproliferation Treaty was often possible thanks to the courage of real statement as President Gorbachev, whose memory I salute today. Today, the future of disarmament diplomacy, including armed controls, is dark and uncertain. Dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, this distressing picture must propel our renewed effort in supporting international concerns regarding nuclear and weapons control. Since the beginning of Russia's invasion in Ukraine, PAM has been following the developments of this tragedy, trying to mitigate the economic and security implications in the Euro-Mediterranean and Gulf regions. Last April, PAM organized a high-level mission to Romania, my country, in order to assist the work of logistic hubs in Tualtia to bring humanitarian aid to the Ukrainian region of Odessa and Kherson. Parliamentary diplomacy is essential to further progress on disarmament, nonproliferation, and weapons control. PAM will continue to support the work of the international community because cooperation is the key to promote peaceful security, environment for us and the future generations. Thank you very much for the attention.
Thank you very much, both Patricia and Dimitra, for those very interesting and important contributions to the meeting. Now, without ado, I'm going to move on to our final speaker on this panel, Reiner Braun, who is the Executive Director of the International Peace Bureau. Thanks for being with us, Reiner. We look forward to hearing your words.
First of all, thank you for the invitation. And it's not so easy to be the final speaker in such a session, but I will try to do my best. Let's start with one sentence to IPB. The International Peace Bureau is the earliest, in the earliest and biggest international peace organization, founded one year after IPU, namely in eighteen ninety-one. And it has today more than four hundred member organizations in about eighty countries in the world. And the main project of IPB is military spending. We organize every year around the days when ZIPR is announcing the new military spending figures, the so-called G-DAMS, General Days Against Military Spending. This year, with about one hundred eighty actions in about fifty countries. So, saying this was obviously when Dan asked us if he can support the idea of the fourth special session, we said immediately yes, because this is absolutely on the line of our work and our activity. Why is IPB so deeply engaged in the military spending issue? To say it in short terms, first of all, colleagues from us were a part of the team which were developing the Sustainable Development Goals. And you remember, some of you will remember, two years after the Sustainable Development Goals were adopted, there was a conference in Addis Ababa discussing how to finance the Sustainable Development Goals. The UN said it costs about three hundred billion per year for ten years, and that there was a meeting. One hundred sixty countries were attending, a lot of suggestions, taxes for airplanes, taxes for education and the end. But only one country at that time was mentioning military reduction, military disarmament. Only one country from these one hundred sixty. And this shows how urgent is our, how urgent is the need for our activities. We have to raise awareness that we cannot solve the global problems of the world without military spending, that we cannot solve the climate catastrophe without military spending. You know, like me, the UN Fund, one hundred billion. How much the countries were paying this year? Thirty-seven billion. And we are paying, spending two trillions for military spending. That is the reality. So this shows how urgent it is, and say a final word to the, I call it social tsunami, which will have in this autumn in many, many countries in the world, not only in Europe, mainly in the so-called the South. How we can solve the social problems in the world without military spending? By using the money, but not only by using the money, but also we need the cooperation between the countries. And can you imagine that under the situation of confrontation, we will come to cooperation, military spending reduction? No. So we need cooperation. That is a need that we are so much in favor of this fourth military, fourth session of the UN. And you know, it is even more important. The third session was in the year nineteen eighty-seven. Can you remember this year? You know, I think the last days with the death of Gorbachev reminds us to these days. It was a time of cooperation and common work of the main countries in the world. And even at that time, we could not really reach deep step of disarmament. And now, by two trillion, and the situation in the world how it is, we need even more urgent to overcome these confrontation situations, go to cooperation in disarmament. So this is the urgency for me to say that we need this fourth session and that we are supporting this idea so highly. And you know, we want to, we want to bring one idea to you which is related to this fourth session. Because fourth session is great, but what is the ongoing process? And we ask us why we don't have a COP process for disarmament. We have in November, the COP twenty-seventh in Cairo to climate change, with limited successes, but we have a process. We have a process, a COP process for diversity, but we don't have a COP process for disarmament. And I think we need these COP processes, which means annual meetings, but not only annual meetings of the governments, but also annual meetings supported by the civil society, the peace movement, the parliamentarians, and other social movements pushing for nuclear disarmament. We need these processes because then we always can bring it again to the public and raise awareness for disarmament. And we are always urged to look for cooperation and coalition buildings. And my question to Nam, what the question, what will be the coalition of the future for disarmament? And I think we need these coalitions, maybe not with all Nam countries, but with the big majority of the Nam countries, for going step forward for nuclear disarmament. So, our suggestion is, yes, we need these four sessions, but maybe we should bring in the discussion that we need these four sessions to create a process for disarmament in the United Nations. And you know, we had some successes by creating these processes. The process for the treaty for the prohibition of nuclear weapons was not falling from the heaven. It was prepared by big conferences in event, Norway, Mexico, and others. It was prepared by a common work of willingness countries and civil society. And from my point of view, we need the same for for disarmament because of the urgency of these questions. And maybe we can combine this and say, yes, we want to have a first highlight or first evaluation where we are in the year twenty twenty-five, where we have the fiftieth anniversary of the Carstian A process or the Helsinki Process in Europe, which stimulate the process of cooperation and common security. So these are some of our ideas because we are thinking we need more actions on the street. That is the responsibility of the peace movement and other social movements. We need more awareness raising. These, I think, we had brilliant arguments today from the different parts of society. And we need a process in the United Nations, which hopefully starts with the first session, the first special session at the UN, but develop a process for further activities where nuclear disarmament. I have not repeated UN Secretary, who was saying the urgency of it. I think it is urgent, and we have to put all our forces together to develop and to create these processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Reiner. I think that's a very important reminder that peace and disarmament are not achieved at a single meeting, but as part of a process. I'm afraid that because we're running quite a bit behind time, we're going to have to cut out questions. So I'd just like to thank all of our speakers and encourage you, if you have questions here in the room, and I see we don't have any online, that you speak to members of the panel who are here afterwards. So, thank you all very much, and we shall move along.
Everyone, welcome to the fifth panel of Scrap Weapons Conference on Activating a UN Special Session on Disarmament, presented together with the Interparliamentary Union. I'm Eloisa Romanis, Scrap Weapons Project Coordinator, and I'm honored to be chairing a panel with Ambassador Alfredo Labbe, Dr. Kenneth Benedict, and Dr. Randy Riedel, prominent scholars and experts who played a significant role in advancing the agenda of general complete disarmament. They will deliver keynote addresses on the importance of bridging the some of the United Nations' leadership to disarmament. And I would like, without further ado, to introduce our first speakers. And I would like to ask our distinguished speaker to turn on the camera if possible. And so I would like to hand over the floor to Ambassador Alfredo Labbe. So Ambassador Alfredo Labbe is Vice President of the International Humanitarian Fact Finding Commission. He retired for a long career in the Chilean Foreign Service, where he served as Political Director General. He previously served as Permanent Representative with Chile to the UN Office and international organizations in Vienna. In two thousand and seven, he was elected Chair of the UN Open and the Working Group on the Fourth General Assembly Special Session related to disarmament. And Ambassador Labbe is a member of the UN Group on Governmental Expert on Nuclear Disarmament Verification Issues and Professor at the National Academy for Political and Strategy Studies in Chile and at the Chilean Diplomatic Academy. So I would like to hand over the floor to Ambassador Labbe. Over to you.
Thank you. Yes. I am sorry, but I, ah, now I can't. Yes, wonderful, wonderful. So first of all, many thanks to the organizers of this very important conference, Scrap Weapons and the Interparliamentarian Union and the School of Oriental and African Studies of the University of London, to good old friends from the civil society that are participating. It's a real honor to be with you today. Well, S S O D four remains a pending political undertaking intended to take place at the United Nations' most representative and politically legitimate body, the General Assembly. As a universal meeting dealing comprehensively with the first of the three pillars of the United Nations, the fourth special session on disarmament would serve many purposes. The first one being a political reinvigoration of multilateral diplomacy on disarmament, nonproliferation, and confidence building. Confidence building is of the essence because the lack of trust lies at the heart of all problems related to international security, to the security dilemma, to deterrence in general. The reinvigoration of multilateralism would emerge from United Nations member states truly interested in nuclear disarmament and the advancement of human security and international humanitarian law. This is urgent in the current environment of great power competition, which exacerbates the dangers inherent, as I said, in the security dilemma and nuclear deterrence as exposed by combined arms races taking place or accelerating right now. And CIPR has provided very good information, in fact, sobering information regarding the levels of expenditure in nu, in, in, in arms in general to the tune of two trillion US dollars. Its natural model, the model for the S S O D four, should be previous S S O Ds, particularly with respect to the need for a fully comprehensive approach to international security, of which disarmament is a vital component, but not the only component, and the high level of political participation. One can only remember the participation in S S O D one, for instance, of Malcolm Fraser from Australia, Justin Trudeau from Canada, Valérie Giscard d'Estaing from France, just to indicate the high level of expectation and political participation that S S O D one elicited at a time, at a time of great stress provoked, obviously, by the Cold War. Such comprehensive approach ought to be conceptually embedded in paragraph nine of the two thousand and five United Nations Summit final document. And here I'm going to quote paragraph nine because it is very important. I will repeat, is Resolution A slash sixty slash one, paragraph nine. "We acknowledge that peace and security, development and human rights are the pillars of the United Nations system and the foundations for collective security and well-being. We recognize that development, peace and security, and human rights are interlinked and mutually reinforcing. As a consequence, we cannot continue to address disarmament and nonproliferation as siloed, if such word exists, siloed big power provinces dealt with in limited membership venues such as the Conference on Disarmament, paralyzed for more than two decades through the abuse of the rule of consensus. S S O D four would signal a salutary return to democracy, to democracy in multilateralism. The S S O D four should find tactical inspiration in the mainly humanitarian campaigns leading to the Ottawa and the Oslo Convention and the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. These three instruments, among others, underline the overlapping of disarmament law and international humanitarian law, but also the pressing need to consolidate the human security paradigm, which focuses on the security of human populations rather than the security demands of states. S S O D four should increase and deepen the levels of civil society participation experienced in nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen eighty-two, and nineteen eighty-eight. The quest for political legitimacy demands a massive, a massive vital participation of civil society, represented by distinguished NGOs universally recognized, such as the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, ICANN, which was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in two thousand and seventeen. Such participation of civil society is indispensable to amplify the global impact of an initiative which will succeed only through enhanced levels of awareness and activism, such as those we observe and admire and envy in the environment and climate change movements. Dissemination and awareness extended to younger generations and incorporating indispensable constituencies such as women organizations will secure a proper understanding of the dire humanitarian consequences of any use of nuclear weapons or any weapon of mass destruction. And here we can only look at the consequences of the COVID-nineteen pandemic to understand the possible consequences of a malicious use of biological, biological means, means of biological warfare, which we have, we have up to a point disregarded until lately." means of biological warfare, which we have, we have up to a point disregarded until lately. So let us remember that the humanitarian initiative in particular highlighted the basic incompatibility between nuclear weapons and nuclear deterrence and fundamental principles of international humanitarian law. And here I'm going to quote from the preamble of the TPNW, "Such as the principle that the right of parties to an armed conflict to choose methods or means of warfare is not unlimited, the rule of distinction, the prohibition against indiscriminate attacks, the rules on proportionality and precautions in attack, the prohibition on the use of weapons of a nature to cause superfluous injury or unnecessary suffering, and the rules for the protection of the natural environment." Now, the history of the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, but also the example provided by the creation of the Group of Governmental Experts on Nuclear Disarmament Verification Issues, where I have the honor to serve, demonstrate that a vigorous, articulate campaign conducted at the General Assembly can result in success. Success, of course, measured against the results that we obtained. And here, I'm, I'm, I'm going to finish with a quotation taken from the excellent, excellent occasional paper provided by my distinguished friend Randy. Here it is, one of the basic documents that every multilateralist should know and that I disseminate among my students in the Chilean Diplomatic Academy. "We need to turn disappointment into fresh opportunities for progress." And this is a kind of dictum that we need to bear in mind, especially after the disappointment in which the tenth review conference of the NPT ended. I know that there are positive ways of looking at things, and people say, and people have written, that even failed, quote unquote, failed NPT review conferences such as the 2005, where I served as Chairman of a subsidiary body III, or even the 2015 review conference, provided some elements which turned into positive results, perhaps for reasons not envisaged by those that made those conferences fail. And the case in point, the most important case in point, is of course the TPNW, which emerged from the disappointment, but not just the disappointment, but the desire from non-nuclear weapon states really bent on advancing nuclear disarmament to twist the arm of big powers in a legal way, but a legal way with political consequences, and political consequences that started a process which will continue. We must not forget, never forget, that multilateralism works in long paragraphs, through processes. We can compare these processes to Wagner operas, you know, that are lengthy, that are very detailed, and but that finalize in glorious affirmation of human basic values. So thank you so much for allowing me to participate in this wonderful exercise, and I stand ready for any questions that may emerge from the audience. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Labbe, for your important contribution and also for remarking the important connection between peace, security, human rights, and development. So the next speaker I have the honor to introduce is Dr. Kenneth Benedict. She is a lecturer at the Henry School of Public Policy at the University of Chicago and Senior Advisor to the Bulletin of Atomic Scientists, where she served as Executive Director and publisher. Now, Dr. Benedict serves as advisor to our SCRAP Weapons Project, as well as the University of London, the International Student Youth Podwash, and the New America Foundation. She's a member of the Council on Foreign Relations and the Chicago Council on Global Affairs. Dr. Benedict, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Eloisa, and I thank you for that introduction. I'm really honored to be with you today and to speak about the prospects for a fourth special session devoted to disarmament. Some of what I will say will touch on many of the excellent presentations that you've heard throughout the day, not particularly as a summary, but just as a way of underscoring some of the, of the ideas that have been brought forth in this splendid conference. As many have noted, these are particularly dismal times for those of us seeking nuclear and general disarmament. As you may know, the Bulletin of the Atomic Scientists' Doomsday Clock is set at 100 seconds to midnight. Over the past two decades, major nuclear powers have abrogated arms control treaties and agreements. In 2019, the United States and Russia withdrew from the Intermediate Nuclear Forces Treaty that banned a class of weapons in Europe. And a year later, they also withdrew from the Open Skies Treaty that provided a means for verifying weapons treaty implementation. We have witnessed the unraveling of the nuclear nonproliferation regime, exemplified by the failure of the NPT Review Conference last month and by increased nuclear weapons production in nearly all of the nuclear weapon states. Russia is threatening nuclear weapons use to prevent increased NATO challenges to Russia's conventional war in Ukraine. And in recent months, we've even seen Sweden reverse its nuclear weapons policy to embrace their use as it seeks entry into NATO. Clearly, the world is at a low point in nuclear weapons restraint. And with ongoing wars, most notably in Ukraine, states are building up conventional weapons forces as well, the very opposite of what we seek under the United Nations pledge of general and complete disarmament. So given these trends, what are the prospects for success of a special session of the UN General Assembly on Complete Disarmament? Let me offer some reasons for hope, if not a precise pathway to move forward. Some of these reasons for hope have been mentioned by several during this conference, so I just want to highlight four particular reasons. First, the conflict in Ukraine illustrates once again that the line that some seek to draw between nuclear and conventional weapons in war is in fact quite blurred. Russia has been able to invade a sovereign country with conventional weapons while deterring direct NATO confrontation by threatening to use nuclear weapons. Such entanglement of these weapons systems starkly reveals to a broad public the relationship between nuclear and conventional weapons. It makes clear that nuclear and general disarmament must go hand in hand. Second, the 2021 Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons holds the promise of becoming an effective instrument of nuclear disarmament. And countries in the Global South, along with non-governmental organizations well represented here today, and with middle powers such as Austria, Mexico, and Norway, and most notably, countries in the Global South, deserve the credit for its success. The first review conference last June demonstrated the power of the coalition of 66 states that have now ratified the treaty, along with civil society organizations when they work together in the framework of the UN. Although the treaty has not gained favor with the nuclear weapon states or their allies, it provides support to the nuclear nonproliferation treaty goals of nuclear and general disarmament and adds weight to the norm that nuclear weapons have no place in our global society. A third related reason for hope is that countries of the Global South have welcomed an approach to weapons disarmament based on humanitarian needs to protect civilians and provide for human security as articulated in the TPNW and in the 1997 Mine Ban Treaty that prohibits anti-personnel mines. It is countries in the Global South as well that have instituted nuclear weapons-free zones to protect themselves as much as possible from the horrors of nuclear war. These five zones, I don't need to remind you, encompass Latin America and the Caribbean in the 1967 Treaty of Tuateloco, the South Pacific in the 1985 Treaty of Rarotonga, Southeast Asia with the 1995 Treaty of Bangkok, Africa with the 1996 Treaty of Pele and Daba, and Central Asia with the 2006 Treaty on the Nuclear Weapons Free Zone of Central Asia. These regions have led the way on nuclear disarmament and call on the nuclear states of the Global North to follow their example. Countries in the Global South also understand the high costs of maintaining conventional military forces and have sought to limit them. In the aftermath of violent conflicts, many acknowledge the trade-offs between expenditures for civilian welfare and spending for military forces, and choose economic and social development rather than weapons purchases to bring prosperity and security to their citizens. Fourth, the United States, the country with the largest and most expensive and extensive military in the world, can learn, must learn, from the example of the Global South if it is to thrive. In fact, some of us in the United States see how growing military expenditures are threatening the very fabric of American society. The US government has reduced its support in recent decades for public education, healthcare, and environmental protection, even while increasing military budgets. The emphasis on raising military spending shortchanges other programs in the federal budget, including those for infrastructure that supports public health and renewable energy, for family and childcare, and for institutions of learning. Such spending patterns tend to disadvantage the already disadvantaged and contribute to disaffection and political polarization. These trends in turn are threatening the democratic norms of American society. This crisis of democracy is creating a new humility among some leaders and citizens in the United States, leading to renewed questions about the imbalance between military and social spending. I take heart, even in these most difficult times, in the prospect that public reaction is bringing leaders to their senses as we take stock of these long-term developments in the United States. These four trends, then, I suggest, set the stage for a special session and UN action on general disarmament. A new appreciation for the entangled relationship between nuclear and conventional warfare. Second, the success of the TPNW with its call for a nuclear weapons ban. Third, leadership by the Global South on nuclear disarmament and reduction of conventional weapons expenditures. And fourth, in the United States, a growing recognition that rising military expenditures rob public spending on social infrastructure that provides for human security. But even if I am right about the prospects for change in how we think about disarmament, when can the international community make good on the 1946 UN promise to disarm? The current war in Ukraine will end sometime, in a month, in a year, or in several years. When it does, the world will bear witness once again to the senseless and absolute destruction of a vibrant and prosperous society. Once again, national leaders, as they did after World War II, will assert the need for general disarmament and the abolition of war. But we cannot leave this important work to political leaders alone. It is civilians who are targeted in so-called modern wars and who suffer the gravest consequences, who have greater say in nuclear and military decisions than they have in the past. Finally, then, hope rests in the persistent and courageous actions of citizens, peoples, and leaders of the Global South, several of whom we've heard from today, of global civil society organizations partnering with middle powers, as we've also heard from today, and of citizens in the Global North. The recent passing of Mikhail Gorbachev reminds us of a time when ending the Cold War was unthinkable, when the idea of abolishing nuclear weapons was unthinkable. Yet it was mass movements of citizens in Europe and the United States, and indeed around the world, who gave the Soviet leader an opening to propose the unthinkable. We cannot recreate the past, but perhaps we can use this time of peril to inspire many more to demand an end to the instruments of war, to demand the unthinkable. Of course, there's a special role for those at this conference who already understand the trade-offs between military spending and human security, who resolve conflicts through negotiation rather than armed conflict and war, and who are already working for a world free of military weapons. But in the end, we will need a whole society approach, an approach that begins with a fourth special session of the UN General Assembly on General and Complete Disarmament. Thank you very much for your attention, and I welcome any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Benedict, for your insightful presentation, and particularly for highlighting different reasons for hope towards the prospect of advancing disarmament and for pointing out the prominent role that the Global South has been playing in implementing such efforts. Next, I'm pleased to hand over the floor to Dr. Randy Riedel. He's Executive Advisor of Mayors for Peace and International NGO, Herkorten in Hiroshima. Earlier, Dr. Riedel served as a Senior Political Affairs Officer in the UN Office for Disarmament Affairs, as a nonproliferation advisor to U.S. Senator John Glenn, and as an international political analyst at the Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory. Dr. Riedel, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm quite honored to be on this distinguished panel today. The great sardonic baseball player Yogi Berra once said, "If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up someplace else." In this light, the best point of departure for any serious discussion about convening another General Assembly Special Session on Disarmament is to recall that the UN's ultimate goal in this field is general and complete disarmament under effective international control, or GCD. This has been on the General Assembly's agenda since 1959 and has been the world's central disarmament goal since SSOD I in 1978, a goal also found in a dozen multilateral treaties, including the NPT. Yet we all know what the GCD has become, as Hamlet would say, "More honored in the breach than in the observance." It remains on the agenda of the General Assembly's first committee, and the Conference on Disarmament continues its unsuccessful efforts to develop a, quote, "comprehensive program on disarmament," unquote. Over the last six decades, however, the international community has permitted the, has permitted its pursuit of GCD to be eclipsed by what states call "partial measures", a hodgepodge of issue-specific initiatives that annually appear to have less and less in common with the original GCD goal. As a result, we have seen the following dubious triumphs: the particular over the general, ad hoc improvisations over any general plan of action, and feckless pragmatism over commitments to act on commonly agreed principles. Making matters worse, some states have cynically used GCD as a rhetorical stratagem to account for the lack of progress in disarmament, especially nuclear disarmament. We hear, for example, that peace and international security in all its aspects are prerequisites for disarmament. Such states have regularly failed to acknowledge how disarmament itself works to strengthen peace and security, a point repeatedly made by Doug Harmershold almost 70 years ago. Thus, we continue to find too many countries seeking security through such dangerous and unsustainable means as expanding military expenditures, growing reliance on nuclear deterrence, modernization of nuclear arsenals and their delivery systems, threats and use of force, and most telling of all, the total absence of any reflection of solemn international disarmament aims in domestic laws, policies, directives, budgets, timetables, party priorities, and organizational structures. Small wonder that our vessel here has failed to reach its destination, given its tattered sail and lack of a wheel, compass, fuel, and anchor. Altogether, this is hardly a favorable environment for pursuing GCD. Yet there are two countervailing processes underway that offer some brighter prospects for future progress. As I have written elsewhere, both democracy and the rule of law are coming to disarmament. The evidence for democracy in disarmament is apparent on three levels. First, multilateral disarmament arenas, especially in the UN, offer an opportunity for all countries, including small and medium states, an opportunity to join in deliberating global disarmament initiatives. Second, coalitions of like-minded states have arisen in these arenas to advance such goals, which embody norms that are intended to apply universally. Third, the same arenas have been gradually opening their doors to participation by diverse cross-cutting, cross-cutting sectors of civil society, as noted earlier in this conference. Together, these forces can help to educate the public about the concrete benefits of disarmament and the risks of failing to pursue it. This is the democratic jolt that's needed. This is the democratic jolt that's needed to revitalize the global disarmament process. The advantage of working in multilateral arenas on GCD is precisely because it is by far the best means available to refute the common criticisms of disarmament, especially nuclear disarmament, namely that it is too utopian, impractical, dangerous in inspiring conventional wars and arms races and other such allegations. The great value added by GCD is in demonstrating the indisputable synergy between WMD disarmament, conventional arms control, reductions in military spending, limits on the arms trade, and strengthening the means to enforce the Charter's positive obligation to resolve disputes peacefully and its prohibition against threats and use of force. Thus, GCD offers a fitting response to why nuclear disarmament will not lead to a new era of conventional wars, because the risks and consequences of such wars will be addressed simultaneously as nuclear disarmament proceeds. And as democratic pressures grow to achieve disarmament goals, so too will the demand for binding legal commitments, hence the rule of law in disarmament. The agenda here for future work is robust. The CTBT has not yet entered into force and a FISAAL material treaty has not even been negotiated. Following the Russian invasion of Ukraine, the future of US-Russian strategic nuclear arms control remains uncertain at best, at worst bleak. The nuclear powers and their allies continue to oppose the TPNW ban treaty and even the start of disarmament negotiations, long required by the NPT. Meanwhile, there are no multilateral treaties governing nuclear weapon delivery systems, no prohibitions on development of space weapons, no ban on strategic missile defenses, and few global norms governing the production, stockpiling, development and export of conventional arms. One way to address one way to address these challenges would be to convene an SSOD-4, which would serve to reaffirm strongly the fundamental principles adopted at SSOD-1, including disarmament's ultimate goal. It would enable states to demonstrate that conventional arms control and nuclear disarmament are mutually reinforcing processes. It would help to advance both democracy and the rule of law in disarmament. It would enable the world community to update some of the 1978 standards to reflect new challenges that have since arisen, including in space, artificial intelligence, cyber warfare, conventional weapons that have potential strategic capabilities in terms of their lethality, accuracy and range. It is true that the General Assembly's first committee could do more to focus on the process of integrating the various threads of GCD into a coherent general plan of action. Similarly, the CD in Geneva would likely continue its efforts to develop a comprehensive program on disarmament as mandated by the General Assembly. Yet the main argument for SSOD-4 is that it offers a greater likelihood of producing a unified, comprehensive vision of disarmament in all its aspects. The regular deliberations of the General Assembly have broken down into a multitude of issue-specific initiatives that scarcely reflect any appreciation for the implications of initiatives in other fields or indeed the relevance of these partial measures for achieving the UN's comprehensive disarmament objective. So, there is a strong argument for proceeding with an SSOD-4. It need not be viewed as any panacea to overcome deeply embedded obstacles to disarmament and it surely should not be viewed as the last SSOD ever. In the years ahead, there may well be not just another SSOD, but several as the world refines its efforts to pull together the various threads of disarmament, arms control and non-proliferation into a coherent whole that best expresses the common interests in peace and security, the primary goals of the Charter. The final product of SSOD-4 could be a detailed outline for a future GCD treaty along with an agreement on provisions for its negotiation. Or it could develop and promote what former Secretary-General Bodki Moon called "a framework of separate mutually reinforcing instruments that would together achieve the same ultimate goal." Now, in conclusion, regardless of the particular outcome, if the world does not work together to advance this great common objective, we will end up someplace else facing either the loathsome status quo or worse, a nightmare beyond imagination. The alternative is to refocus on GCD and SSOD-4 offers the potential not just to deliberate this ultimate goal, but to get on with the work of achieving it. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I spoke so long.
Not a problem. Thank you very much, Dr. Riedel. Thank you for your compelling presentation and particularly for reminding us that GCD remains on the agenda of the General Assembly's first committee and the Conference on Disarm- -ment, although it has been forgotten in mainstream narratives, mainly focused on non-proliferation arms control. And now I'd like to thank you all for your insightful contribution. I would like to open the further brief discussion. I would like to ask just one question to you all. What do you think is the first step that may be pursued, the first next step, in order to activate a first special session devoted to disarmament at the United Nations General Assembly? I don't know who will have to answer the question first. Most welcome. Ambassador, please.
I will repeat what I said in 2007 when I was chairing the Open-Ended Working Group on the SSOD-4 and advocating for the need to create a critical mass of political will. Now, "critical mass" does not imply necessarily a tremendous majority of member states working at the General Assembly. I would say that tactically, we should, for instance, rely upon the experience of the humanitarian initiative and the group of states that moved forward the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. That would be a good starting point. And as the results, for instance, of the votings, the voting of the resolutions leading to the Diplomatic Conference of 2017 that negotiated the TPNW, or the resolution that created the second iteration of the group of the GGE on nuclear disarmament verification issues, you will have a majority. And why the United Nations General Assembly? Because the rules of procedure of the General Assembly allow for voting. Although, of course, heavily recommending the quest for consensus, this remains as important as ever because consensus resolutions, consensus recommendations carry a greater legitimacy, political legitimacy. Resolutions and recommendations are politically binding, not legally binding, but they carry more weight if they are adopted by consensus, of course. But if consensus is simply not possible due to obstacles, due to the action of certain delegations that we know very well that use and abuse the rule of consensus, for instance, such as in the Conference on Disarmament, and we have experienced that, we have the possibility of voting. The possibility of voting, for instance, was considered very seriously in the 2010 NPT Review Conference. We were ready to do that. And this readiness, of course, forced the hand of certain delegation that I'm not going to mention into accepting the final documents. One of them was, of course, the very significant plan of action, the other was the review, properly reviewed document which was adopted under the authority of the president, the chairman of the conference. So, the venue is crucial in this respect and the General Assembly is the right venue for this kind of initiative. But in order to create the critical mass of political support, you need to turn to certain like-minded groups that exist already and that are the right groups for moving forward this kind of initiative. And this grouping would be, in my view, the group that moved the TPNW. Now that I am having the floor, may I answer a question that was posed to me by Mr. Michael Woodman? "A quick concern: he thinks that it's a mistake to relay upon age-based, especially youth organizations. Today's youth are not more likely to effect real social change than youth of generations past." Wow, ouch. I remember the strivings of my generation to produce social change here in Chile or in Latin America, for instance. The need to incorporate youth is related to the need to renew the cohorts, to renew the rank and file of practitioners and not just the practitioners, but the ranks in civil society of people ready to promote and to move politically these initiatives. And I have learned through my experience as professor in the Chilean Diplomatic Academy that it is simply not possible to pass from one generation to the next generation the experience, the experiential, say, kind of experience, sorry for the repetition. And I was surprised, I remember very well using an example as a way of promoting or moving my discourse. And I referred to My Fair Lady, the musical, and no one of them knew it. And I was astonished. I suppose, I assumed that this was universal. Well, of course, not as universal as La Traviata by Verdi, for instance, but kind of universal. So, you need to preach the faith again and again and again. And for this purpose, for renewal of the faith, for renewal of the awareness, for renewal of the commitment, you need to engage the younger generations of every age, of every time. This would be my approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, also for answering the question from the audience. It was a very interesting answer and I agree it's very important to renew always the historical memory because it can be lost very soon and it's very important for young generation to be aware of the importance to advance for disarmament and that even humanitarian concerns, they should be they're not granted. I mean, it's always important to keep reminding certain values. So I'd like to ask the same question then to Dr. Bennett. What do you think would be the next move to activate the first special session at the UN General Assembly?
Well, I subscribe completely to what Ambassador Lobbie has proposed. And I also want to remind us of the success too of the landmines ban treaty, which was initiated again by international NGOs working with the Canadian government and the leadership, which resulted in a ban on conventional weapons. And if we want to work not only towards nuclear disarmament, but also to conventional weapons disarmament, I think we can take some lessons from that as well. And as I suggested, I think it will take public awareness and what I call a whole society approach. This conference, I think, has been a splendid beginning. I'm really impressed with the range and the depth of participation of the panelists here and to have a series of UN-associated, UN-sponsored conferences, something like this, I think would go a long way towards building a coalition and building the community of people who can support a conference at the UN and also to help inform, bring more awareness to members of the General Assembly, to the states' parties, to the UN. So I think we're, in a way, at the beginning and it's a very good beginning indeed. Thank you.
That's very promising. Thank you very much, Dr. Bennett. And I would like to pass on the same question to Dr. Riedel. What do you think could be the next step?
Well, the SSOD-4 will not happen if there is no General Assembly resolution permitting it or mandating it. And typically, these resolutions contain details about objectives, the agenda, and also address the issue of whether there will be a preparatory committee meeting for the convening of such an SSOD. So I think one of the focal points should be on putting some pressure and focus on the General Assembly to, first, I would guess that a logical champion of this idea would be one of a collection of member states, typically including Malaysia or Indonesia, to proceed with a resolution along these lines or to at least commence a debate on it, perhaps building on some of the themes that were addressed by the recent Open-Ended Working Group that concluded its work in 2017. One theme that has always bothered me in my years at ODA was the the juncture between disarmament and development. In the 70s and 80s, these used to be issues treated very, very much together. And over the years, they've kind of drifted apart. And the communication between the disarmament community and the development community has been not great. I once did a comparison of the websites of the humanitarian affairs and disarmament and development. And there's basically a multiple, a parallel set of different communities there. It's a two or three culture problem. They need to do more to talk to each other and do cross-sexual alliances and cooperation. We had proposed, for example, that the heads of the human rights agencies and the head of development and ODA would together do op-eds and common speeches and promoting. And the reason for doing this, of course, is to is to make it clear that the entire world community has something to gain from this, that they are all stakeholders in this. And the points that Kinet made, I strongly agree with what she's saying in terms of making the public understand the profound opportunity costs that are being lost here by failing to address home issues. And I'd like in particular to tip my hat to the IPU, my former colleagues who work in the legislative process. I think they have a profoundly important role to play. And I'd also say that the other constituency that has, will inevitably have an important role to play are people who live in cities. The world population is now primarily urban and growing increasingly so. And that's one of the reasons that I work for Mayors for Peace because we believe that city mayors have an enormously important future role to play in reaching their common citizens and teaching them and helping them along to educate why they have an interest in this, both in terms of their security, but also in terms of their welfare. And it's a powerful argument. So I would look at these constituencies, legislators and mayors, as important players in moving this agenda forward. And I do hope that one state will come forward and begin a debate in the GA on that new resolution for SSOD-4.
Thank you very much, Dr. Riedel, and thank you all for sharing your important insights and for your contribution. It has been an absolute pleasure to hold such a high-level panel with you all. I'm afraid I need to wrap up this session because we are running short of time and I need to hand over to the next session, which will be run by our Scrap Weapons Project Assistance from our student body, SOAS. So thank you very much again to you all and we'll be in touch soon for further engagement. And I will hand over the floor to our students. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this roundtable discussion with the Project Assistance at Scrap Weapons. I'm Vaishnavi and I'll be chairing this session. Since 1995, the UN General Assembly has been calling for a fourth special session on disarmament. It has been nearly 30 years since these first conversations and 34 years since the third special session. Today's political climate shows us that this fourth special session is needed now more than ever. And to this end, we invite you to sign Scrap Weapons Call for Action and share it widely with your colleagues. And to this end, we invite you to sign Scrap Weapons Call for Action and share it widely with your colleagues and networks. You can do so online by scanning the QR code on the posters around the building. As students and project members of Scrap Weapons, for us, this conference is a culmination of all the work and advocacy that we have done over the last year. We are grateful for this opportunity to reflect on the lessons we have learned and what is the way forward for global disarmament efforts and activism. It's my pleasure to introduce my friends and colleagues at Scrap Weapons for this roundtable discussion. Amir, Ben, Reece, Sunita and Bowie and Philip, who have joined us online. With that, I'd like to kickstart our roundtable discussion with the first question. Why do you think now is a relevant time to call for a fourth special session on disarmament? Yes, Reece, go ahead.
Um, well, I think the world now is arguably more dangerous than it has been at any time since the end of the Second World War. Um, and it's a perfect storm, isn't it? You've got the return of large-scale war to Europe. You've got ratcheting tensions in, in Asia between the US and China. Um, you've got an energy and food crisis caused by conflict. You've got countries spending more and more on, on, on armaments and defense, including countries which, since, since the end of the Second World War, haven't, have not been, like Germany. Um, so clearly now is the time to call for this fourth special session. And I think the, the key thing about scraps treaty on general and complete disarmament is, is the, is the fact that it's, it's not nuclear weapons right now that are, that are killing people around the world. It's conventional weapons. So eliminating both nuclear and conventional have to go hand in hand.
Absolutely. Does anyone else have any? Yes, Sunita.
I think the world needs to act now because it faces an existential threat. And that threat, as we all know, is climate change. And what the world needs to do now is that it needs to divert all the money that it spends on weapons, any kinds of weapons, towards tackling climate change. So I think it's really urgent for disarmament to take place. So the only way the world will be able to do this is if it, if it acts multilaterally and very soon.
Thank you. Yes, Amir.
Um, well, um, as, as you all know and attended this conference, I think the urgency of having the SSOD four is, is undoubted. Um, why? Because of, first of all, the certain current situation that we have in the global north, in the global, global south. Um, no matter where, where you go or direct your finger on the map, there is always a problem. And it always includes armament. So unfortunately, um, the urgency stems from, from, from the um, current situation that we humans have, um, uh, put ourselves on. So if it's not now, it's, 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 it's too late now, actually. So if it's not now, then it's, it's, it's never gonna be. So yeah, um, the urgency is, is, is obvious to everyone, not only to policymakers, to the public, um, to civil societies, to, to everyone around us today.
Yes, Philip.
And I would like to say now we can see around the world, the action is being taken against, you know, for example, the climate chaos that exists at the moment. There are big movements happening, especially with young people as well. Um, so really, it's not a time of complete isolation of the movement. It's a time of wider public awareness and as a result, a much bigger capacity to, to join forces essentially and to create a real force in total for change.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing your views, everyone. And I think what Philip and Sunita said provides a nice segue into my next question. Um, and I think we can all agree that disarmament has to be studied and analyzed and even enacted upon through a multidisciplinary lens. What are the global challenges? Do you see the proliferation of arms and nuclear weapons intersecting with and impacting? And I know that we've discussed this extensively about climate change, but is there anything else? Yes, Ben?
Uh, yes, as you said, I think the first one that jumps to mind is definitely climate change. But I think there's more niche areas as well that aren't as discussed, apart from occasional flare-ups in the media. And I think one of those is, of course, the United States relations with North Korea. Um, the United States has been having some form of diplomacy with North Korea regarding their nuclear missiles program for thirty years. And as far as we can tell, it's a failed form of diplomacy. If anything, they've expedited the North Korean military program, right? And I think that comes from an unbiased and not multilateral form of negotiation between the two nations. It is detracting from the major issues in the region, which is, of course, the humanitarian issues, right? And all of the United States' focus is on the nuclear weapons, North Koreans' nuclear weapons program, which is not effective and it hasn't been effective. There needs to be a multilateral fair approach to this situation where people can come together at a table and discuss a multilateral percentage-based equal production in arms across the board. And only then, when that is established, there won't be such a strong focus on such a single specific thing and we can open up to more humanitarian issues. Um, I have a quote here from Yumin Park, who is a North Korean refugee and writer. And she has said in one of her books that she published in 2015, "Spring in North Korea is known as the season of death. Where winter stores of food run dry and the people wait for new crops to grow, children catch crickets in the fields to eat and survive." This is something that should be taken way more seriously, way more seriously though, than the arms focus that America is doing on. And we need to have that multilateralism to address that.
Thank you for those powerful words, Ben. Does anyone else have anything to add? Yes, Amir.
Yeah, um, well, another important issue is the, um, the issue of inclusivity in decision-making.
Hmm.
So I think, um, as, as Lucy referred on her speech, uh, that we form, um, the largest or the majority of the population on this planet. And we are the ones who are impacted as, 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 as the, the youth. The, the ones who are impacted by, by such rise on armament and armed conflicts around us. So the issue of inclusivity in, 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 in policymaking is very important. And it should start with the disarm, disarmament approach. Because this is what is commonly perceived as a high-ranking official or policy, um, layer, if you wish, um, of decision-making. So if we have the youth engaged on that specific layer of decision-making, that means inclusivity has, has, has gotten out of um, the, 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 the coating of tokenism into, into real engagement in policymaking.
Um, great points made by everyone in pointing out that the effects of um, nuclear weapons and arms proliferation do not exist in isolation with other global problems and challenges and that there's always an opportunity cost in terms of directing resources to tackling these problems. So the elephant in the room that needs to be addressed is Russia's invasion of and war on Ukraine. When you have a permanent member of the United Nations Security Council with a veto that flouts international norms, laws and rules, how do you think there can be accountability and progress in arms controls measures? Yes, Reece?
Well, I think this is why, um, and it's a great question and a very difficult, difficult question. Um, but this is why we need to revitalize multilateral decision-making and multilateral diplomacy. Because that's the only way we're going to be able to dial down tensions, isn't it? In, in, in the long term, um, going forward. And I think, um, we've seen that it can happen before at the height of the Cold War. I don't think anyone was expecting that, um, it would end without a shock fired. Um, and that there would be, um, uh, significant arms control treaties achieved. So I think there is always hope, there will eventually be change, as long as we just keep going and, and don't sort of give up and think, oh, well, this is never going to work. We've got to keep, keep going. I think if there's one thing I'll take away from today and listening to all the inspirational speakers, it's how advocacy, activism, um, and, um, people coming together to try to, to shape the political will can really make a difference. And I think we've, we've just got to keep going.
Yes, Sunita.
Yes, I'd like to add to that, that actually civil society, pressure groups, NGOs, all these kinds of people, students, can really play an instrumental role in bringing about a ban in weapons, I think, because they have been very instrumental in the past. For example, in making sure that landmines are banned, that cluster munitions are banned. So I think the way forward is to, to, for, for the student populations, civil society, NGOs, all of them to work together to put pressure on governments to do something.
Thank you. Thank you all. And I'd like to recall what Bina Lakshmi Nefram said earlier about how eighty-eight percent of the world's weapons are actually manufactured by the permanent five of the United Nations Security Council. And I think all of these conversations that we've had come back to the urgent need to reform and diversify the Security Council and really hold these powers accountable. So it is unrealistic to expect that states would reduce their defense spending and budgets for weapons and arms when trends across the world are pointing to an increased allocation of financial resources to defense with each passing year. What do you think is the way forward in such a global political climate? Yes, Amir?
Yeah, I would respectfully disagree with you that it is realistic. And the evidence of it being realistic is that we are all around here today from different countries, different backgrounds. And we are talking and having these discussions on a civil manner with no arms on hands, with only papers and pens. And we, we can, we can, we can make some agreements. So this is the way for the future, this is the way for peace. And it is always realistic. Um, dreams are, are dreams only when we are sleeping. When you wake up, it's a reality, it's the next morning. So it depends, do we wake up? Well, that's, that's a decision that we have to make. Um, and then we, we can see how, how the reality can, can, can change by collaborating and through multilateralism.
Well said. Thank you. Yes, Sunita?
I was just, I was just gonna add, I mean, it's forcing governments in Europe and, and obviously the US spend more money on weapons. Um, and so they're helping Ukraines in the hope that, you know, Ukraine will, will win and it'll defeat Russia. But I think ultimately, peace will only be achieved through diplomacy and discussions and talking. And I think that's what governments need to do personally, uh, to give peace a chance, basically.
Yes, Reece?
Um, I also think the key is to, as was said earlier in the conference, to, to raise awareness and to make disarmament more prominent in the, in the public consciousness. You know, the, the climate change movement has been very successful in getting us all talking about climate change. And it's all we really talk about now, isn't it? Especially in the media. But we don't really, um, uh, talk, talk that much about arms control, about disarmament. You know, when I talk to my friends and family about it, they've got no knowledge of it. It doesn't really ever cross their, their minds. Um, so clearly more needs to be done to get the nation talking, not just in the UK, but, but around the world. But it'd be good to, to get, to get us talking about it in, in, in the UK, since this is where we are right now. Um, so yeah, I think that's, that's, that's a very important part of, of, of this.
Ben, is there anything?
I can only really echo what my colleagues have said, that I think inevitably there's going to have to be a decision made. And we, we discussed this briefly yesterday and the fact that climate change is, is coming whether you like it or not. And there's gonna have to be a time, sooner rather than later, where people are gonna have to decide, do I want to continue to spend money on weapons frivolously? And perhaps result in even more warfare, claim for limited resources as climate change approaches? Or are we going to reinvest this money internally and try and save what we have? And that's gonna be the real major decision that has to be made and it should be made now.
Indeed, powerful closing words there. Thank you all for such an insightful and thought-provoking conversation. I wish we could continue it, but for the, in the interest of time, we have to conclude now. Um, it's definitely left me with plenty of reflections to take home and I hope it has for those in the audience as well. Before we conclude, on behalf of Scrap Weapons, we would like to present a closed, a closing joint statement. Our world is in a perilous place. As the threat of global war intensifies, driven by Russia's invasion of Ukraine, a rise in East-West tensions to their highest levels in decades and other countless conflicts, general and complete disarmament is needed now more than ever. Armed conflict is destroying millions of lives and inflicting untold human suffering, often on the poorest and most vulnerable. The world's armies are contributing massively to climate change, which in turn is driving more conflict. And as we are witnessing today, war is exacerbating an energy and cost of living crisis throughout Europe and causing a food crisis which will hit the global south the hardest. Money poured into the military-industrial complex could and should be reinvested in domestic policies, which support the poorest in our societies, such as welfare programs, healthcare and education, as well as in official development assistance. As the failure to reach a consensus at this year's NPT Review Conference demonstrates, the current international arms control and nonproliferation agreements are not fit for purpose. But there is hope. As we saw at the height of the Cold War, effective arms control agreements can be reached during the moments of greatest danger as long as the political and public desire is present. We are optimistic that scraps advocacy can help to influence public and political opinion and advance the ultimate goal of disarmament. This is why we are urgently calling for the activation of the fourth special session on disarmament at the United Nations. It's only through multilateral diplomacy and international consensus that military tensions can be reduced, the threat of world conflict be removed and an enduring peace be won. Thank you all once again, and I will hand over the mic to...
Look, Michael Eavis expressed his confidence in the next generation. And I think after this presentation, I think I can probably retire and leave it to, to you folks. Uh, thank you, those of you who stuck with us for the whole day. It's, I think, been truly inspirational. We've built, I think, here a new coalition across different swathes of civil society that haven't been brought together on these issues really before, particularly bringing in the religious dimension as well as the expert and parliamentary side. Uh, these are powerful new coalitions in the making. We hope that, uh, member states here will, uh, take that little step. Some of you, I, I remember old, uh, college discos when people are around the edge of the room and no one is dancing, and then suddenly everybody dances. Well, we need that first couple, the first state to, to step out and talk to colleagues and get the dance going at the UN this October on the special session on disarmament. I, I hope you will join us for a further wrap-up conversation. Uh, we have a little extra food and some fruit, sandwiches, coffee, uh, to hang around and talk some more. I know I've had a chance to talk to some of you, but not all. Uh, but I also need to give profound thanks to SOAS's IT team, particularly Mohammed Shantouf at the back. Equally out of sight now, but hopefully not out of mind, are the IPU translators who have been working tirelessly throughout the day to provide the French translation. Thanks to them. To our scrap team, Henrietta Wilson, Zarik Pezi, Aloisa Romani and Martin Butcher. Together, I think we have, uh, built something quite special in the course of today, more than I think we imagined possible, um, a few months ago. Um, and, uh, God or whichever gods you're interested in or subscribing to, willing, we shall, as they say, prevail and prevent the worst of outcomes overtaking us. I was expecting somebody to ask me about the, the graphic. Uh, and the graphic, I think, represents both doom and hope. Um, that picture is a photograph of a US nuclear weapons test in the nineteen fifties when a hydrogen bomb was fired from a cannon. The same sort of cannon that you see in Ukraine and other parts of the world. Subsequently, thousands of hydrogen bombs were produced and deployed by the Soviet Union and the United States, in Europe and also in, in South Korea. Unilaterally, without any agreement, at the end of the Cold War, the United States and the Soviet Union scrapped a lot of them. And there were thousands, literally thousands of them, and they've all gone. So with the crisis in Ukraine, of course, some would say, ah, Ukraine would never have happened if they'd had lots and lots of battlefield nuclear weapons. Others would say, well, we've only survived by luck and thank goodness that we don't have that level. Recently, you military leaders are saying we have a shortage of tactical nuclear weapons like this. Recently, you military leaders are saying we have a shortage of tactical nuclear weapons like this. So the good news is that they have gone from the world's regular armed forces. It shows the integration of conventional and nuclear in that one slide. And the bad news is, if we don't watch out, they'll be back. Thank you very much.